All right, good evening, everyone. And I want to welcome you to the zoning board of appeals for town of Wareham. Tonight's agenda for August 22nd, 2018, and it is 6:30 PM. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I make a roll call to my far right, member Wilma Engerman. Our clerk Jim Akubachi, my far left attorney Jen Kendrick. Carl Baptiste Senior, myself, the chair. Nazir Alkolasi also present. Town planner Ken Buckland. Independent counsel for the town. Attorney Paul Haverty and independent professional engineer, Mr. Charles Rowley. Just gonna do some business quick before we get to the meetings.
Regarding the minutes, I'm reviewing them right now. I have not previously read them. They look good so far.
Somebody reviewed them?
I reviewed them.
They seem fine to me.
Okay, make a motion.
Let me make a motion. We accept the minutes from August 28th, 2018.
Six.
August 8th.
August 8th.
Apologize.
Okay, so we have a motion by Carl for August 8th. Minutes, second by Jen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, 5-0-0. 19-18 Walmart. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Paul Jandro. I'm the store manager at Walmart. I live at 221 Riley Ave, Somerset, Mass. Last time I was here, I asked for six 40-foot trailers next to the road. I went back, looked at the parking lot. I can fit 12 20-footers on the opposite side of the building in the parking spots, the 17 parking spots that are right there. And no one will be able to see them from the road or half of the parking lot when you're in there.
So you're taking 17 parking spaces to do the trailers?
It'll take 15. Not all 17.
15?
Yep.
And how long you need those trailers?
From October to December 31st.
Just for this year?
Well, I came here to see if I can do that every year. That's what we came for. But again...
Yeah, you need some plans. If you need that for every year, you need some plans. I'm not comfortable personally. We'll ask the board, but I'm not comfortable to give it permanent without plans.
Okay. I sent it off to higher up and they haven't given me any plans yet. I'm just coming back to you, letting you know that I could fit the 20. I know your concerns was from the road. Now you can't see them from the road. They're behind the building.
I know. But don't you have the grocery pickup on the other side?
Yep. There's already nine parking spots there. That won't be affected.
But there's a reason why you have those 15 parking spaces. They're there for a reason. You eliminated them. I mean, that's why we need plans. We want to see the parking calculation you guys had originally. If you minimizing, like taking off what the rule says, you need a variance for that. You can't just take parking lots, put containers. So that's why you need to call your headquarters. I don't know what it is, in Arkansas somewhere.
Yes, it's in Arkansas.
Right. So, and talk to them. You need some plans. Now, if your plans had, if original plans, you did an extra 15 parking spaces for the heck of it, that'd work. But if you didn't, you can't just eliminate them. And that's why I said, I asked you last time, if you do the plans and stuff, you could have them permanent. So if you do the right plans, this way you don't have to come back and forth and you could have them for good.
I'll...
So, yeah, pass them. I think you should do this.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, go.
Can we make a motion? That's fine. Can we make a motion that this will be the last year until he gets those plans?
We can.
Allow him to do it this year and have it for next year if you're gonna come back to us?
You wanna do that?
That's fine.
Okay, how's everybody feel about it?
Suggestion that we grant with prejudice that we will not grant in the future.
No. We just grant this one year and no more without plans, no more. Not anymore. We won't grant it for following years without.
Okay.
You guys feel okay about it, Jen?
That sounds...
All right? Yes? Wilma, you good with it?
Is that, is that on the other side towards the industrial park?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, how, how close to the, this stream?
They'll, they'll fit exactly in the parking spots. Right on the sidewalk. They won't go any further. The whole road will still be there. It won't be next.
Taking 15 parking spaces away from what? We gave you permits for...
Yes, ma'am.
And according to, that we're supposed to take and you're supposed to have the number of parking spaces we gave you according to the size of the building. And you want to take the whole 15?
15. Last year, you guys gave me permission. I took a lot more because there were 40-footers. This year, I'll take a lot less.
Wilma, we're gonna give him this for this year. Next year, he has to come with major, with serious plans.
Plans? Okay.
All right?
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. Carl, you wanna make that motion?
Make a motion that we grant special permit for, no more than 15.
Yeah, six containers, 20 footers, right?
12 containers.
12.
12 20-footers.
12 20-foot containers.
12 20-footers, yeah.
For the Walmart property at 2919 and 2427 Cranberry Highway for the 12 containers.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Well, it's time limited, right?
Right.
October to December, right?
October 1st to January 1st. How's that?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And that would be the last year? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our first public hearing, 28-18 Ramos Realty Trust, 300 Glen Charlie Road.
I signed it. I'll probably sign it earlier. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 22nd, 2018 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, to consider petition number 27-18 for a special permission/variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1335 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Ramos Realty Trust, 300 Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass., 02538, seeking to construct a 816-foot living space addition and 896-foot rear deck addition and construct a new detached garage located at 300 Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass. that appears on Wareham Assessor's Map, Lot C4, in the R-130 zoning district.
All right. Your name for the record?
Alene Mason, 14 Alpha Street, East Wareham.
All right, sir.
Kingston Nagus Warren, 300 Glen Charlie Road.
Okay. So I know you came before. Now, does, did you try to work with your several engineers to make it 20 feet away from the...
We did. We did. We just have the wrong plans. They gave us the wrong plans.
They gave you the wrong plan?
They gave us back the originals.
Is this the wrong plan?
That's architectural, Thomas Civil, plans right now.
So they don't have those, you don't have those plans?
Yeah. We picked them up today when we realized they gave us the wrong one.
All right, good.
Are these the correct ones?
Yes.
That's the plot. But this is correct? Are these correct?
Architectural. Right. Okay.
Is that we have a...
We gotta share it.
Sir, you have another one?
No, that's good. All right, very good. So if you, everyone recalls this project, we ask them to go back, try to get 20 feet at least, which they did, 20 feet, six inches, and, and the capo, opposed detached garage. Okay, and you're gonna take the capo and put a garage?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Wilma, do you have any questions?
What's this, this kind of?
Just looking at it right now.
All right, good. Long night, Jim.
It's not, that's the old one.
Jim. Okay, Jen?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Carl?
Say 8-2.
Do you have any comments? They moved it 20 and a half, which is good.
They did what we asked?
Yep. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against? I hear none. Okay.
I'm good.
All right.
Want to ask Charlie if he sees anything quick?
He just did what we asked him to do.
Okay.
All right. Let's make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a favor to ask you or a question to ask you. This is a zoning board for variance and special permissions, right? The design of this house right now is completely obtrusive to even look at, to put a small little jog in the back there on a home that is completely squared off in all directions. As a builder, I built this, I couldn't even put my name to this because it'd be a travesty. But again, this is a special permissions we're asking. We have no immediate residential abutters on any side of this property. For the past five to six months, it has been notified a multitude of, about four to five times, has had any protest against us. You are the only ones who've seen the original plans, requested professional stamp plans to be drawn, which we did. And upon bringing that to you, then you came up with this new addition, which is to put that jog, have 20 feet coming all the way around. For the fact that we already have surpassed the setbacks that is set in place for the location where we are located.
Yeah.
I'm asking for a special permission for you to allow us to build that house square because that is just...
It's, I know.
A visceral infraction.
I know what you're saying, but we're giving you more than what you're allowed. It's called a variance, and we are giving you a variance.
Well, we haven't decided if it's a variance or a special permit.
Right. So we are giving you more than we're supposed to, and we can't, we're trying to stick with the minimum. We're not even allowed to give you this really and truly if we want to nick it. So it's not, we're just trying to help you out as much as we can. And if we do this with you, then everyone else wants, we like setting standards. The setbacks there are 30 feet. So we're giving you 20.
Then when, when did it become 30 feet? Because when I came in January and spoke to your gentleman, the gentleman next to you said to me that because of the area we were in, it didn't matter.
No, it did, it does matter because you...
It may matter now, but back then it didn't, sir.
2000, listen, I wish I could, if I could give you a thought, believe me, I give you a thought. It's, I'm not, I'm not like coming up with ideas. We can't just...
Well, I'm not repeating something that someone didn't say to me.
I know, but 2006...
So I'm just a little concerned because that was my whole issue.
I know.
Was that...
Listen, it's two, in about 2006, the rules changed. There used to be, yes, I heard you, ma'am. Just give me a minute. It used to be 20 feet. They did it 30. So if you want to stick the rules, it's 30 feet. Understand? So even with the old rules, you're not allowed to do it. And it becomes a variance. We could, we could like pull a vote. I don't think you'll get it.
I, I think this is a special permit. Honestly, I would say it's a special permit with, with or with the, even with the 15.8. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, it's a substantial increase in the nonconformity. I, I realize that it's...
You could make a motion.
Well, I would make a motion.
Well, let's, let's hear first the lady. Yes, ma'am. Can come forward? Come forward, go ahead.
Hi, I also live at the residence.
Your name?
My name is Marlene Love Ramos Gudisen. I also live at the residence, and I have been going back and forth to town hall.
You gotta...
With this.
For the record, sorry.
Sorry. I have been going back and forth to the town hall, giving the plans, the architectural design off of what was said. And I'm, I'm a little lost because if you go back to the minutes that were recorded on January 29th, and the meeting that was continued after that, if you go back to the minutes that were recorded and listen to the recording, it was stated in a recording, on a recording from your board, that the variance wasn't an issue because the house was grandfathered in. It was built in 1974. The variant, the house was built 15.9 feet from the property line. It was grandfathered in. There has been an addition since then, back in 1992, which brought it to the 15.8, which wasn't an issue with the town. So to say that the house is grandfathered one minute, to turn around and say now there's a variance involved, I'm a little confused because when we came here the first time, it was we need the architectural plans, we need the engineer stamp, we need all this. We did all that. I paid for all that.
Tancy, a question, your confusion. The existing structure is grandfathered. We're not questioning the existing structure. He's addressing the additional.
Okay, but that wasn't stated in the beginning. That's the, that's the confusion.
This January, this January?
This January, we came in front of the board.
I did.
Was I here? I don't think I was here.
I did. And I, and that was the whole, whole thing. When they asked me about the addition, I says, we gotta go before the town. I don't know if they're gonna allow you to do it because of the way the property lines slanted in from the road so that it's not squared, it's slanted in. The original, when the house was built, and it was built in 76, by the way, right? They originally placed it right on the road.
Yeah.
We had them, the people from Collins Estate, tell them, no, that's not where we wanted it. We wanted it set further back, which they did.
Yeah.
But when they set it further back, they didn't move it over. They just brought it back. They left no, very little on that side with the abutting high tension lines.
All right, if you want, we could like, the board member, she would like to...
Special variance?
She'd like to, to make this motion. So we see how it goes. Okay, so you want to add anything else? All right, so let's make a motion to close it.
So moved.
Do I have a second to close the public hearing? Second, anyone? Jen?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, I'll say it closed. Okay, what's, go ahead.
So, I would make a motion that we consider this as a special permit. And I would consider their plans as existed before they were modified to allow for the 20.5 setback in that one corner. I don't think that it's a substantial increase in the nonconformity, and it's, I don't see it as a substantial increase or substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Certainly, no one has been here to voice any concerns. And further, it's, there's no one living on the property surrounding it.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Do I have a second for that?
Yeah, I'll second that. Okay.
So, second by Jim. So you guys gonna go back to the plan drafted by J.C. Engineering of 514, 2018?
That's what I'm referring to.
All right, I have a second by Jim to grant this, to grant the special permit. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 What do you say, aye? Aye.
No.
No. 4-0.
Are you aye or nay? Yeah or nay?
4-1-0, it passes. There, there you go.
Thank you.
But you need the plan, so we didn't make you do for nothing.
No, 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 no.
I know, but we have to have plan where it's so tight like this. Good luck.
You have a copy, did you say?
Yes.
The old one, the 514.
You don't need any more? No, I, you need any more from 514? I have a whole bunch.
No, you need them. You gotta go back.
No, I have a whole bunch.
No, we have plenty.
No, I have a whole bunch. You don't have to go and do that.
Yes.
No, we have them. They want to make sure we have them.
Not detrimental.
No, that's mine. Well, that's yours.
And not substantially... Not substantially more. Non-conforming.
And non-conforming to start.
And where we go and grant 4-1-0. Standard?
No, I'm just saying the back end, the back corner. There's only 20.
150-foot electric easement next to one.
Who's that date?
514, 2018.
They think, they think, right. I feel that we couldn't give them, not them, I, that they have.
I don't think it's a big issue on that, on that particular one.
Throw these old plans out. All right, John Cook Jr., 10 Main Ave.
Take one and pass the rest?
Pass down.
One, two, three.
This is one.
Good call, Jen.
This is stable.
Take one and pass him on. Did you have one of these yet?
Yeah, right here. That, that's for the stable.
Let's go, this is, this is the last one we did? And this is part of the last one?
Yep.
And what's this one here? What's this?
That's right now.
Okay. I don't know why we open two folders at once, but it sure does make it easy to confuse things. Okay. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 22nd, 2018 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center at 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 30-18 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, Article 3, Section 352, Article 14, Section 1450 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to John M. Cook Jr., 10 Main Avenue, East Wareham, Mass., 02538, seeking to create a riding stable and paddock located at 10 Main Ave, East Wareham map, that appears on Assessor's map, 11 Lot 201, in the R-30 zoning district.
Okay, name and address for racket?
My name's John Cook Jr., 10 Main Avenue.
Okay, just, I'm gonna tell us what you're doing.
Um, just like she said, I want to apply for to have, keep my childhood horse at my residence, 10 Main Ave, for the remainder of its life. And I know you guys refer to it as a riding stable. I just want to clarify that this will be one horse. I will not have other horses, nor do I ever plan to have another horse after this horse. I've had horses for 20 years. My family has decided to get rid of the horses. This one horse in particular, I have raised since it was born on my property. I just ask your permission to let me keep this one childhood horse on my property. It's more than halfway through its life. I don't feel it's fair to the animal since it's only ever known me feeding it every night for the last 15 years. I couldn't bring myself to get rid of them. We got rid of the other five.
Is the horse currently on your property?
It is.
Okay, and so somebody has made a complaint? That's why you're here, asking permission?
No, the only complaint that was made was, somebody said that its paddock was too small, but it is a temporary paddock. He is using a trailer right now. So I want, I wanted to get your permit and your permission first before I go building or setting up a permanent paddock, which the paddock size by state law does not, there is no size requirement for a horse. It just has to have a enclosure of three sides.
How big is your land?
I have 14,000 square foot lot, double lot. And if the, I know that the size, you say five acres or less, I don't understand really where that comes from, but if you call anywhere around here to board a horse anywhere from here, you can call 50 miles out, every paddock will be 30 by 40, 40 by 50. Very, very rarely do you see anything over that, and this paddock is gonna be 60 by 40. You know, he's got plenty of room. I take him out, I ride him all the time. I get on him two, three times a week. I take better care of that horse than half this town does their dogs. I clean it multiple times a day.
According to the building inspector, it does require five acres, but you could do with a special permit, you know?
When did they change that bylaw, you know?
No, but you could do a special permit if less, which is good in your favor.
This is a special permit? I thought?
On less than five acres of land, in the R-30, it requires a special permit. So that, that's a good thing for you. All right. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against? All right, Wilma, let's make a quick comment.
Well, I agree that it should, the five acres is what we had, we've got in the bylaws, and they should be kept because... And the other thing is, I, I don't know, the Assessor's office says that he's, he's only got 7,025 square feet for a property.
That's the, that's number eight. I own number eight and 10. I own a double lot, not just this, the 7,000. It's 14,000 square foot. It's just about a half acre.
As I said, according to the Assessor's office, the 10, 10 Main Street says 7,000.
Yeah, I don't know why I get two tax bills, but it's a double lot. I assure you that it's more than 7,000. It's half acre land.
You should straighten that out.
I actually asked them, and they said there's nothing to do about it. I don't understand why I get two tax bills, but...
But still, that's not five acres of land.
Right, and like I said, if you call anywhere around here, from here to 50 miles out, you, whether you got five acres or a half acre, you know, it's, the paddock sizes are the same.
Yeah, but that's still, we are Wareham, and we have our bylaws.
It's allowed by special permit. What he's asking for is, it can be allowed with special permit.
Correct, thank you.
Well, I don't...
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, Jim.
I'd like to read for a minute, if you don't mind. Go ahead, let somebody else.
Jen?
Was there anyone here to speak in favor or against?
No favor, no against.
I, I don't have to be, I would be in favor.
I, I've talked to all my neighbors before I even brought the horse there, four months prior, everybody was stoked about it. There's two of my neighbors that have owned a 300-acre farm their whole life. They love horses. The people that are directly next to him, they absolutely love them. They actually had a farm when they were younger. Everybody's stoked about it. Nobody has any, anything to say. I gave them three, three and a half months with them, living there, so they can, you know, make a definitive answer. And they still are, you know, all about it, so...
I have, I have one more question.
Yeah.
Do you have a permit from the Board of Health, and they've been down to check the property?
I didn't know there was one required by the Board of Health.
Yes.
Once he's living there, or now?
No, in order to open, to...
It's still not our concern.
Have it.
Let the Board of Health deal with it.
I can go down there, it's no problem.
Listen, let me ask you something, the, how old the horse?
He's 15.
What are you planning after, hopefully lives, whatever, when he passes, what are you planning to do when he pass?
He, I will never have another horse there.
Okay, so we could put a condition that...
My 20 years of owning horses is over. This one horse, I just couldn't bring myself to get rid of.
Anderson.
And boarding him off in Middleborough or Rochester, I don't think it's fair either because...
So you have no problem with the condition that, for special, especially the permit, special permit will feed just for that horse?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I have no objections to that at all.
All right. Carl?
I have nothing.
All right, Jim?
I'm, I'm fine with the horse staying where it is.
Okay.
If the neighbors aren't here complaining, um, I'm looking at the word riding stable. My interpretation of a riding stable would be somebody that's boarding horse, uh, boarding horses or renting horses.
Absolutely, that's how I took it.
Just lumber from.
Yeah.
So, this is, um, in my opinion, this is why this, this board is assembled and exists. So, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. All right, giving this guy some relief.
Okay. Any more comments? I hear none. Can we have motion to close?
So moved.
Do I have a second to close? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay. Somebody wanna, someone for motion? Jen.
Make a motion to approve the special permit.
Okay, any discussion conditions? I'll make a condition that the permit will be for this, this specific horse. After it passes, it will just, I guess, disappear. I don't know if you can disappear once it's recorded.
I'm sorry, I read the horse's name, but I forgot it already.
X-ray.
X-ray.
I named him when I was eleven. Don't, don't make fun of me.
His condition, I don't know how much it holds, but condition it. All right, so that's the condition.
The X-ray horse shall be the sole animal allowed and no, no other. What's, what, equestrian? Animals. In future, now or future?
Okay, so we have a motion by Jen, and who gets, who's doing second? Have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Second by Jim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Opposed.
Oppose, four, one, zero, carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys, for your time.
You're very welcome. Good luck with your horse.
Thank you.
Thirty-one-eighteen, Dennis Sullivan, One Barn Street.
I suppose you're gonna let him do it.
Just give us a minute, all right?
Let's not get Wilma on here as they're closing. Just gonna, yeah, this is John Cook. Everybody, that's everybody.
Let's get signatures first.
Yeah. Let's put this in here and pass it down, then we can stay with the folder. Is that going with that folder, the last folder? Is this from that one?
Yeah.
Now, do you wanna slide this in there with that? Behind you, yeah. In that folder, Carl, it's right there under your elbow, I guess. Just, yeah, just, there you go. Have you signed?
Yep.
All right, next one. There you go. Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on August twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty P.M. in room three twenty of the Wareham multi-service center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number thirty-one-eighteen for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-one, and Article thirteen, Section thirteen thirty-five of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Dennis Sullivan, Kara Lockwood Architects, Post Office Box ninety-five, Onset, Mass. zero-two-five-five-eight, seeking to construct a new second floor addition on an existing structure located at One Barn Street, Wareham, Mass., appears on assessors' map fifty A, lot one-six-seven A, in the R thirty zoning district.
Name and address, please?
Uh, good evening, Bill Lockwood with Lockwood Architects, and with me is Dennis Sullivan, the owner of the property.
Go ahead.
Um, properties at One Barn Street in, uh, the Swifts Beach area. Uh, there's an existing elevated structure on the property, uh, which is a one-story elevated. Um, we're proposing to add a second level to, on, entirely on top of the existing structure. At that, the, the, partially it will be a, a new roof deck, and partially it'll be a new family room. Uh, the entire piece of the construction will represent about fifty percent of the footprint of the structure. Um, and that, so you'll, you're most, be most enlightened by the, um, the architectural plan, which is included in your packet. The site plan will look just like the site plan looks.
All right, very good. It's already above flood zone, right?
Yeah.
It's already built according?
It was, yes, and the, the zones have changed slightly, but, um, it was compliant when it was built.
All right, Wilma.
I'm not, I've got nothing to say.
Okay, Jen.
Um, based on my first glance, I would, I would, um, see this as a special permit. There, there are no increases in any of the non-conformities. I don't know if there's any, anything, anyone here to voice any objections um, with respect to being detrimental to the neighborhood.
So you're just taking the roof and adding the floor, right?
Um, taking off half the roof, um, approximately one-third of that half will be a roof deck.
Yep.
The other two-thirds of that half will be a new family room.
That's same footprint, same?
Same footprint.
And you...
It's a very tight lot, so there isn't, isn't much place you could go.
You're still, um, under the maximum building height?
Uh, well under it.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna be at about twenty-eight and a half feet versus the thirty-five, which is allowed. Um, it's an increase of about three and a half feet over what's there now.
Right. Of course, none of the other non-conformities increase.
Nope, it's entirely on top of itself.
All right, is there anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor, against? Okay, I hear none, so let's move to closer.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye.
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 Jen, you wanna put your two cents?
Um, well, I, just repeating what I just said, I would make a motion to approve this as a special permit uh, based on, uh, finding that, um, the proposed project um, does not present a substantial increase in the non-conforming nature of the, uh, property, and, uh, that, um, the proposed, um, uh, plan is presented does not, uh, result in any, uh, detriment to the neighborhood.
Here it is right there.
Do I have a second for Jen's, uh, motion?
Seconded.
Second. So it's, you wanna go with that, like, with the special permit, right? So that's a motion to go with the special permit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor to go with the special permit, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Opposed.
Abstain, so it's a special permit, and now you can make a motion?
Well, just reiterate my motion, I mean, what I said, what I just said.
All right.
So I won't repeat it, but I, I will make a motion to approve the special permit for the same reasons I, um, listed a moment ago.
Does not create any new non-conformities nor increase any existing non-conformities, and as such, is not substantially more detrimental than the current conditions. Okay, good. Is that okay?
Ken can tweak it a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so do I have?
Just happens to be written that way somewhere.
He can, uh...
Do I have a second for Jen's motion?
Might be jumbled a little bit, but he can.
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Opposed.
Abstain, four, one, zero. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Lockwood date, what?
Five tw- five twenty-five eighteen. Miss Passit. Done, thanks, all right.
What'd I do with it?
I just buried it. I got it right here.
Where on Family Dental?
Yes. Put, put it...
Yep, I got it.
Put it where?
Pass.
Wind up.
You need one.
That goes with that.
Need one more, thank you.
Thank you.
Wilma, one?
Yeah, yeah, Wilma.
Yep. I was a little relieved.
It's the sticking outside, please.
All right, continue public hearing, thirteen-eighteen, Wareham Family Dental.
We don't need to read, read this in then, do we?
No. Public hearing's still open. Go ahead, Bill.
I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering. Um, just as a point of order, do we have enough members to vote for this tonight? Um, I know it's continued, continued from, I don't know, six-twenty-seven?
We're five.
We're the five-member board.
Okay, just wanted to be certain. I know Jake's not here and would prefer to proceed with, um, a quorum.
Yeah, we, you have a quorum.
Yes, exactly. Okay, um, the last time we were here, I think that the request was that we submit to you architectural plans for the, for the building. That was the, uh, that was the request that, uh, continued us until, till tonight. We provided those architectural plans to the degree that they were completed. Um, I can, I can provide you with the set. Um, I think you're most concerned with the building elevations. So I, again, I have the building elevations on the board. They're also in the, in the plan set. That is, uh,
Thank you.
The plan set that was submitted.
Two, three.
So I can have a happy to explain those. I think the drawings, the architectural elevations are eight-five-point-one and five-point-two. The first drawings that you're looking at will be the, um, demolition plan, the floor plan, and the layout. Those are the, uh, that's the way the building will look from the, from the exterior. That's what it is. You were, you were seeking more than the interior elements.
Yep.
But again, this is the front view, one, one-five-point-one. This is what we're being viewed from, on, from Sealy Road. Currently, there's an entrance in the front of the building, some stairs. That's to be removed. There'll just be a series of windows. From a, a, not a, a, a fish, a couple of dormers in the front, a series of windows. Um, the west elevation, they call it the Harton elevation. This is the elevation that would be looked, that would be seen from the west side of the building, or the side of the building that faces the Harton line. The main entrance is, uh, is curved linear. There's a handicap ramp that's shown. It's also, also showing on the other side of the entrance. Everything, the footprint of the building as shown in these architectures is, is identified, um, precisely on art. Just for, for, for it. Um, so the same theme, old strip, stone, wall on the bottom, a case of type windows, blockboard siding, and, uh, shingle roof, asphalt shingle roof. And then, on the opposite side, this side here is in rear elevation. That's the portion of the site that's facing the, we're in the authority property. So, again, continues along with the same architectural theme on, um, on all four sides of the building. So, I think it's certainly an improvement, uh, quite an improvement to the area, um, into the building itself. That's what we have with respect to the architectural plans. The other plans that are with you, they show the, the, uh, the dental rooms, the waiting area. There's a child's play area. There's offices for the office manager, I mean, what have you. Everything, um, to service the patients will be located on the first floor. There's a sec, there is some room upstairs on the second floor, but as I understand it, that would be solely for the purpose of storage. There's an employee lounge in the rear of the, rear of the building. And that stairway in the, that's shown on the rear elevation, that is the employee entrance, um, out, out the rear of the building. So that's what we provided you with respect to the requested architectural plans.
All right, did you work out all the stuff with Charlie on the, on the site plan, Charlie?
We're set.
We all sat from last time, I believe, right?
I think you have a letter for that, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's do some quick questions. Uh, Wilma, do you have any comments on the architectural plans?
No.
Jen?
I'm all set.
Ken, you have anything?
Yeah, it looks kinda nice.
Uh, looks good?
Yeah.
It looks good. Jen?
Nothing.
Anyone in the audience wanna speak, favor or against? I hear none, so I like it. I'd like to see that building getting done, so that's nice. Would, how'd you make out of the sign? Did you ever come up with a plan for the sign or not?
The sign has been the, uh, it's on sheet four of ten, the, the way that we have, have shown it on the, uh, on the plan.
Okay.
Just a very simple sign, uh, two posts.
Yeah.
It's five by four feet, um, with one uplight from that landscaping, um, around it on, that are shown on the landscape plan.
All right, very good. Any comments from anyone? I hear none. Let's move to closer.
So moved.
Do I have a second to closer?
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay, it's closed. Also make a motion.
I make a motion, we grant as proposed.
I'd second that.
All right, so we have a motion to grant as proposed by plans drafted by, by Wayne John Jack in August eleventh, two thousand eighteen. So they have to stick with those plans, okay? I'll swing by as much as I can. Any other conditions somebody like to do to put? Jen?
Any conditions needed?
No. Okay, so motion by Carl, do I have a second?
This is, um...
Second.
Second by Jen.
This is the planning board.
Suggest standard conditions.
This is the planning board thing to sign. This is ours.
With, uh...
Says planning board at the top. You can cross that out, but...
Yeah, that's the planning board. See, look at the signature page. That's not ours. I think they got cross filed.
Yep.
We're gonna have to sign this, um, we're gonna have to go into the office to sign this, the... The, uh, page we need isn't in the folder.
All right, let's, let's vote on it. Okay, so we have a motion by Carl, second by Jen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. They sent us the planning board file?
They did?
Yes, sir.
They sent us the, what we signed?
Do I look like George?
This is, this is the one, this is the one from the planning board. This is their decision and everything, so their decision got put in our file, and our decision that is made.
So can everybody go by the office when you have a chance, sign? Wilma, are you yes or no?
Yeah.
Yes, can you go by the office when you have a chance, sign it?
Yeah, I will.
All right, very well.
The only thing is, um, when you go down, when you cross the Bourne Bridge, and you're heading towards the Otis Rotary, on the right-hand side, there's a dentist's office. The big sign says dental office, and they're located in Pain Plaza. Would you please not make this Pain Plaza with ten dentists?
All right, we'll definitely not do that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate your time during the process.
Thank you very much. Enterprise. Twenty-two-eighteen.
This is, um...
All right. Okay, twenty-two-eighteen, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, One Express Drive. Public hearing's still open. It's yours, Counselor. Just names for the, for the racket.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tim Shifoni, on behalf of Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company, Boston LLC.
Doug Valeri, Enterprise.
Amanda DeBiazio, Enterprise.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman... Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, the way we left it the last time.
Thank you.
Enterprise Rent-A-Car of Boston was seeking a use variance to establish a retail truck rental location in an industrial zone.
Yep.
Um, generally speaking, it's my understanding that the board was somewhat satisfied with the section forty, excuse me, uh, forty section ten criteria.
Yep.
And we were somewhat, uh, hung up on in discussing the parking that would incorporate approximately thirty-foot box trucks. In the way it was presented to the board previously, the box trucks would either have to be parked partially on the grass where the area from the bumper to the axle would be extending on the grass. Or the box trucks would slightly be extending into, uh, the driveway.
You got one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Submitted a new plan. We went back to the engineer with the board's concern. And Mr. Valeri here from Enterprise Rent-A-Car of Boston met with the owners of Cape Cod Express and they came up with a solution. The engineer revised his plan as before the board tonight. And basically what it's doing is taking twelve parking spaces and slanting them where there'll be six box trucks parked. And as you can see from the new plan, even with the box trucks, um, not going on to the grass area, they're not going to be extended into the driveway. And there's a twenty-four foot area that's open for traffic to converse back and forth. Additionally, on Express Drive itself and right behind the box trucks are four additional spaces that would allow a, a box truck even larger than thirty foot if it became necessary. Uh, even though it's not planned, uh, it would, uh, allow this, um, area to be utilized in a manner not to interfere with any congestion.
Okay, very good. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor, against? I hear none. Comments from the board? Wilma? Ever comment?
No, I have nothing to say.
Ken?
No.
Uh, Jen?
Uh, I'd be interested to hear what, uh, Mr. Rowley thinks.
Okay, Carl. Good?
I'm good.
Charlie, what do you think?
The spaces they have shown seem to be adequate for thirty-foot blocks. If that's the maximum length of the truck. It appears that even on the short side of the diagonal spaces, this room.
Alright, cool. We've just tendered draft the decisions for variances.
Standard conditions?
Yeah, for variances.
So we'll have to, uh, work up some, uh.
Do you want to add anything to? Counselor, can you draft a decision?
Yes.
And let us review it?
Absolutely.
Okay. If I hear no comment, can we move to close it?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Alright, what's the wishes?
Grant a variance.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim to grant a variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Can you draft the conditions for us?
Yes.
And when can you have it by?
The end of the week.
Okay, and you could email it to Ken, he'll forward to us with a viewer.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board.
Thank you for your tolerance.
Alright, it's the big one now. Thank you. Ready? Here you go. Alright, uh, twenty-six dash eighteen, Eighteen Burgess Point Road Realty Trust and John Deekus, Eight Windship Ave. Hi.
Uh, my name's Peter Balzerini. I am a trustee for Eighteen Burgess Point Realty Trust. I live at Three Burgess Point Road in Wareham.
Alright, it's still, the public hearing's still open, so.
This is the last one.
What do you wanna say?
Well, at our last, uh, at our last, uh, visit here to the, uh, planning, to the board, the ZBA, uh, we went through a list of, uh, issues that we brought up relative to the, um, the cottage that was converted in, you know, for the building that was converted into a cottage at the shores of, uh, Onset Bay. Property belonging to Windship LLC. And, uh, we went through the issues quite thoroughly, I believe, at the, uh, time. And, uh, you wish to continue it to, to issue your, your ruling relative to our appeal. Our main concern, uh, was the, the septic system that was, that, that services this, uh, this cottage now. And we were informed at that time that this really wasn't the, uh, the purview of the ZBA to, to deal with that. And we have gone to the, uh, to the health agent, Mr. Ethier, and he has assured us that he's gonna look into this issue. So that issue is pretty much, you know, off the table as far as, you know, this board is concerned. The only thing left that we have to say, other than it was already said, was that, um, it's been stated by the, uh, the principals of the Windship LLC that this piece of property, this building, is only used as a day cabana. And we would request that in any enforcement order that be brought, you know, as part of this appeal, that it be stipulated that this building would only be allowed to be used as a day cabana. That it would not be allowed to be used as an overnight residence, uh, as they claim it isn't. Uh, I don't know, again, if that's within your purview to do that, but that would be something that we would request that you, you would consider. Other than that, I think everything else, we've already gone over everything else that we had to say relative to the complaints. I don't.
Mr. Deekus, you have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. Deekus.
Yeah, uh, John Deekus, I'm the immediate neighbor to, uh, to the property in question, and I've lived there since the sixties, so I've witnessed everything that's occurred on that property since that time. After the present owner, or Mr. Clemmie originally bought the property back, I don't know, ten or twelve years ago, whenever it was, it's changed hands once more and gone into this LLC. And I was here at the last meeting and I heard it stated by, uh, his attorney that it's not used for overnight purposes. Now, I don't know if it's been rented or, or people allowed to use it, but I have witnessed, okay? I'm the next-door neighbor. I've witnessed overnight stays at this particular building, this cottage, which used to be a shed, where they put a lot of money into to fix it up with a, with a bathroom and a kitchen and a cesspool, whether the cesspool was there recently or whether it was built twenty years ago, doesn't matter. The stuff from that kitchen and that, uh, and that bathroom go into that cesspool. And it's not a bomb shelter and it's not a underground storage. It's a cesspool. And I have a beach right next to it. And that cesspool's fifty feet from the water. So my feeling is that they should have been required to have a Title V, uh, examination and live up to whatever the obligations are under the law in order to convert that shed, storage shed, into a livable quarters, which has housed people overnight. Okay, I don't know if it was a rental or not, but I've seen it, I've witnessed it, and people use it quite often during the day as well, because they have a lot of people and a lot of guests and parties and so forth. And that's fine. But stuff's going into that cesspool.
Okay.
That requires a Title V examination. That is not a day building. It is a building that's used both for that and for overnight. And, uh, and I'm fifty feet away from that property.
Your property line fifty feet or your house? Your property line?
My, my house runs from, my property runs from my, my house lot runs from the house to the beach. And I've got beach adjacent to.
But, but, Ms. Deekus, is your house fifty feet from the cottage?
No, 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 no. My house is, is further back.
Like how much roughly? Two, three hundred?
Two, three hundred feet, yeah.
Okay.
But my beach is only fifty feet.
I understand.
From that house.
So your biggest concern is the septic?
Well, it's a septic, but it's, it's the law. If the, if the law requires a Title V examination before.
No, no, but I, let's stick with the, the substance of the issue. What, so if it's septic, I totally understand, so you have to deal with the border house. We can't.
We're gonna do that.
That's excellent. So, but that's your concern, the septic. You, you guys don't have a concern if they.
I'm also concerned.
They hang in it, the kids hang in it.
I'm concerned about the misinformation that, that their attorney provided at the last meeting, that it's not used for overnight. And I've witnessed it. It is used for overnight.
Alright, but if, if I may ask a question, if somebody has a cottage and his kids hang over it, whether in the day, at night, or morning, what's the difference if it's an allowed use? This is my, my concern, so this is my question. If you have a cottage on.
Chairman, there's, there are three dwellings on this single lot. That sounds like a subdivision to me, okay? He's got a house, he's got this building that we're talking about, and he's got a garage which has turned, been turned into.
Is it rented?
A living quarters.
Is it?
All in the same lot, and there's only one Title V septic and one cesspool.
Okay, is it rent, do they rent this, do you think?
I don't know what they do. There are people in there. I don't, I don't know what they do. I don't, uh, involve myself with them. But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna talk to you about credibility, okay? Because this man has miscommunicated many facts to the town of Wareham in various times, under various situations with various boards in the town of Wareham. And he's been fined and he's been dealt with by other boards because he's not a credible person. And for you to sit here and accept everything they say as fact, uh, you really have to look at it a lot more closely.
I personally, I don't, I personally, I accept what's, what's before me. I don't know about the rest of the board. I don't, I don't, I don't care who's making his comments or how they present in that case. I don't care what they say. I, I, I base my, my decision on when it's front of me. So I don't know his, whether he's a good person, not a good person, liar, honest, so I don't know.
Well, his credibility should be important to you. He, he states certain facts to you that are not facts.
But with all due respect, he's not, I'm, I don't have a black robe on and it's not a criminal case, you know what I'm saying?
We're here for zoning and you keep talking about.
Well, well, he, the gentleman has, the gentleman has a point. Um, I mean, that part of what we're, uh, to decide does depend on, uh, disputed facts. And in that regard, credibility does come into play, where you have one party presenting one set of facts and the other presenting, um, yet a different set of facts that would make the outcome, uh, different. So it is, he has a point.
So, so right now, you guys agree this building's been there forever, for how many years, right? But your problem is the cesspool, which you're gonna have to deal with the border house. And your problem that they stay overnight in it sometimes. This is, this is your concern.
Well, well, the concern was that the, the, uh, the work that was done, this is the original reason that we brought this before the board, was that the work that was done on the shed was all done without any form of, uh, permitting. There was no permitting done through the Conservation Commission, uh, through the ZBA to, you know, to, for the usage of the property. Uh, there were no building permits issued. Uh, there was no inspections done afterwards for any of the work that was done. And, uh, they made the claim at the last meeting that this was all, uh, it was beyond the statute of limitations, because they claimed the work was done, uh, more than ten years ago, which I, I respectfully disagree with. Since we purchased the property that we have that in two thousand and ten, uh, we didn't do any work on, or didn't start to do the planning to put a path through our property until two thousand and eleven. And it wasn't until that time that we became even aware of what that building was. And it was during that time period that we witnessed, uh, the construction work being done on the property, on the building. So the, the claim that it was done beyond tenure, they brought pictures and who knows, whatever. But, uh, you know, pictures don't always tell the story either. And, uh, but, you know, be that as it may, that, you know, if that's the case, that's the case. Uh, you know, you're gonna make your decision based on what evidence you see in front of you, and that's, you know, it's certainly your role as the board. But, uh, the issue, I guess, that, that you have before you, the, or the pertinent issues that you can deal with are usage. I mean, the usage of the building, isn't that one of the things that the ZBA deals with?
Absolutely.
And our concern is that the, with the lack of permitting and the lack of oversight that was done, this was done completely without any oversight from any board or committee or any, uh, inspectional services of any kind within the town. It was just done. And now it's being used as an overnight, uh, residence. It's turned, it's been turned into a full-scale house. It's got air conditioning. I mean, you can see the air conditioning unit. I mean, if it's used day, daily at the beach, why does it have an air conditioner in it? I mean, I mean, I don't know. Maybe you get hot at the beach and you wanna cool off. It has a shower, it has, you know, a full kitchen. It's a house. And I believe that the, the ZBA does have the right to limit the use of this because of the lack of permitting and the oversight that was done in the first place. I mean, doesn't that fall into your purview now to, to, uh, put some sort of an enforcement, uh, you know, thing on this?
That's the question I have, is that.
Bring the mic.
Once it's, once it's already built and the board can, can ask, once it's already up without coming through us, can we enforce anything?
It was always built, this is the thing.
I understand that. So there's nothing that came through us for a variance or a special permit that we could put conditions on, that we can put conditions on.
Well, that's the whole point.
So I don't know who's, who enforces that.
So I think, I think the only.
That's the question I have for whoever can answer it.
Alright, I'll answer the question. Go ahead.
I think the only thing that we could do today, tonight, is to act on, uh, whether or not the building commissioner was correct in denying your request for enforcement. Um, and as I, but as I recall, Mr. Requine is saying, he deemed this an illegal dwelling unit, uh, but pointed to the fact that he, uh, could not find any evidence of any work done within the last ten years, therefore providing them the protection afforded by statute. And so I think, to me, the issue is whether or not there's any evidence of work done within the last ten years. And of course, Mr. Clemmie in his affidavit says no work has done since two thousand and seven. I'd like to hear more about what you've observed.
If, if, if I may say something, there's no question that the building's been there for a very long time. If anything, right, right now, right now, if they wanna get a permit to change the siding and to change the window, they can. If they follow proper procedure. If they wanna put a deck, they can. It doesn't requ, it might require conservation, but these, they, the, the, what they asking for that this building, they saying it's, whether the use of it is right or wrong, what, what, whether, what kind of work was done to it, even if it wasn't done, they could do it tomorrow. Do you understand what I'm saying? So they saying they put AC, they deciding, put the deck, right?
Mm-hmm.
All these things, even if they're not done, the, the person, the, the owner of the house can go today, tomorrow, and apply for a permit and do them.
Well, that's the point of why we were here in the first place, because all of the things that you just described were done and no permits of any type were ever pulled for anything. Now, there's no enforcement involved with someone who violates.
Right, that's the question I have.
That's the question. Now, the claim is that it's beyond the statute of limitations, but the, there are some things, there is, you know, that still can be investigated relative to.
Right, but I, as I understand, I, I remember from last time, they did have a permit for the deck and the siding and the dock.
Yeah, the, any permits, yeah, they had a permit for the dock and they claimed that the, uh, the deck was part of the dock. But if you look at the aerial photographs, you know, from the, you know, the, the time sequenced aerial photographs you can get, the, the dock, the deck that extends from the house all the way to the dock wasn't there when the dock was built. It was put in afterwards. And even that, there was no, there was no permit, there was a big deck around the house and there was no permit pulled for that. The only permits that have been pulled were just this past summer, I believe, uh, for retroactively for the work that was done, once this issue became brought to the forefront.
But my.
Does that open anything up? Once, does that open up the, uh, the statute of limitations? That was a question I had.
Well.
If you do work on something and you don't get a permit, and then you pull a permit now, when does the clock really start ticking?
That's, that's a good.
Well, the, the thing would be, you, he just pays a fine for doing work without a permit.
Alright, so does the clock start ticking now again, or is there's a statute of limit, limitations? Does that eliminate the statute of limitations? In other words, does the clock start over?
Well, there are two different issues, though. One is it just unpermitted work, and one is there a structure that is simply illegal and would not have been allowed, so.
The structure is legal. It's been there for over fifty years.
Yeah, but it wasn't legal as a house. It was legal as a shed.
That's the dispute.
And it's been turned into a house. And it's been turned into a house, so how is it legal?
As I understand, it was called the boathouse on one of the old plans.
Yeah, that's not a house, where
But a boathouse, you
A boathouse isn't where people live, it's where you put boats.
No, please, let's, let's, yeah, go ahead.
I said this the last time you folks were here, and I'll say it again. You're convinced your neighbor is incredible, or non-credible. Incredible may not be the word you'd use, but non-credible. Whether we find him credible, incredible, believable, or unbelievable, is almost moot. You're in front of the wrong board at this time. They've done something, they've gotten away with it.
But they're not, they're not as to one issue.
The, the problem that you have is you're trying to get some enforcement. The only thing you can sink your teeth in is through the border health. The border health has regulations as to how many cubic feet and how many square feet a residence and non-residence. If he's renting it, he has to have a permit every year, it has to be inspected every year. Within two years before or after the purchase of the property, the title, the septic system or systems in place have to be inspected. Okay, this person, they're not the applicant, you are the defendant or whatever, wherever, the people that you're complaining about sat in front of this board and uttered, and I heard it, "We didn't have to inspect it, we paid cash." That doesn't excuse them from having it inspected. And I'm beyond zoning now, and I'm talking a little bit about Title V. That doesn't excuse them from having it inspected. The problem is, there's no mechanism to trigger an inspection. If they were borrowing money, the bank would say, "Get it inspected, or we're not lending them the money." But they had the money, so there was nothing to trigger it. So, now the trigger is Mr. Belzerini and Mr. Deekus. They marched themselves down to the border health, and they say, "He bought this place, there's a Title V, there's a septic system in the ground, I want it inspected." They have to do it, two years prior, two years post. The border health marches down there and says, "Hey, how long you own this thing, and where's your inspection? We don't have one." Good, get it.
We all agree on that.
The border health can do that. We can't.
We all
You're asking us
Everybody, they agree on that.
Please, don't argue. Hello, hello.
We gotta, we gotta, we got no bullets in our
Please, one more time, we all have a chance to speak.
We got no bullets in our gun. So, you're sitting here talking to this board, and this board has no bullets. Do I think the guy pulled a stunt? Sure. What can I do about it? Nothing.
That's not, that's not accurate.
Let Jen speak, go ahead, Jen.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say to you is, go spend your energy, you can get some relief.
Jim, it's enough, Jen.
And I, I understand what you're saying, I'm ready with what you're saying.
Can I have the file on this, please?
You wanna say something?
I never got the file on this.
All right.
I just wanna make the point that, I think they're clear that they have to go to the border. But there is an issue, that is a zoning issue, and
I don't think they're zoning it.
I don't see, can you
As Dave Raquinas said, with respect to Just give me a moment, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, sir, you want to say something while she's looking at it? Go ahead, John, sorry.
Well, I just wanna add to it, I don't know what the law requires, but if people are going, if your neighbor is going to do something that requires a permit, that requires a process, shouldn't the neighbors be getting some kind of a notification? Shouldn't there be some kind of a public hearing?
It does.
And that's why you go by the statute of limitations, because nobody knows anything. He does everything in secret down there. We don't go snooping around, we don't know what he's doing, we're assuming everybody abides by the law, we do certainly. But then you see him doing, violating planning board laws, planning border health laws, we're going to the border health, don't worry.
Right, yeah, that's
He's not putting a Title V system in there before we're done. But, and I understand that, that's not your, under your, but we're taking one step at a time, and this is one step. He built that thing without going through the appropriate procedures, he's done that with every board in the Town of Wayham, he threatens the Town of Wayham with lawsuits, he's a bully, he's a bad neighbor, and we're not gonna sit here and let him get away with that stuff anymore.
All right, but let me explain to you, he, for instance, if he gets a permit to change the siding, he doesn't need to notify anyone. When he did his dock, I'm sure he notified everyone. I'm sure you get a green card and register mail, didn't you? Because on a dock, you need to notify everyone. But doing a deck, if he's not encroaching on a setback, or coverage, or height requirement, he doesn't need to know, just go simple building permit.
Well, he would've had to go to the Conservation Commission for the deck, which he should've been notified for that.
If he, right, if he did it, if he's within 100 feet of the conservation
He is.
I, I don't know if you get it, so again, you're on the wrong board.
Again, like, like Mr. Deekus stated, there was, the reason we never were notified when the deck was, was added on to was because he never got a permit. So, there was no, nothing triggered the, the green cards, you know, the certified letters. I mean, if you just do something, you just do it, you know, and then, you know, you try to get, you know, some sort of admonition afterwards, or whatever, you try to get, you know, you ask for
Can we listen to his attorney?
Sure.
All right, counsel, please. Yeah, go ahead.
The whole issue is, so this dwelling structure would not be, it's not allowed, they would not be allowed to have that legally, under our bylaws. So, the whole issue here is whether or not, when it became a dwelling structure, if it is and when
Right, but the
It's never been a dwelling, it's not a dwelling.
It's a boat
That's the problem. There's no evidence before
Okay, please sit down, Dave, for the record, and then you can
Attorney Jeffrey Angley, actually, Mr. Clemmie could sit next to me as well.
Yeah, do you mind, sir?
Sure. So, thank you, so my name is Jeffrey Angley, you know, attorney for Winship LLC. And we have been through this already, and I have to tell you that, that unlike the petitioners just have to come in and provide you with some oral evidence, you know, we worked very hard to put together on a very short notice, a lot of information for you. So, for example, we found a 1980 plan that shows this structure labeled boathouse in 1980. You know, we know Act Only, it goes way far back, I think one of the members of the board members is far back, but at least we can go back to 1980. We provided you with Google Earth shots, starting in 2001. It shows this structure, and it shows a deck. It's like almost everything that the petitioners say is just, starts from a basis of being incorrect. There's no addition of a deck, there was a deck. We have pictures from 2001, we have pictures from 2004, 2005, and 2007. Now, in 2007, they replaced the deck, and they replaced the siding, and they replaced the roof.
Did you get a permit for that?
They did now, they did not at the time.
Okay.
They have applied for, and they have secured permits from the building inspector for all the work that was done.
Okay.
So, they are now, as far as I understand, and the building inspector could confirm this, they are in compliance. So
If, let me cut you out for two seconds. Let me say something. Even if he doesn't have these done, say the old deck's still there, he can go out today, tomorrow, and get a building permit to redo this, and, and you can, nobody can stop him for that. If he can, do you understand what I'm saying? Just like putting a deck
If it's non-conforming, you can be stopped.
So, so here
Well, you could appeal it, yeah, but if
Here's the thing
One more time.
It's, it's a one
Let me finish. Carl, what do you wanna say?
Nothing.
Jen, why are you saying it's not accurate?
Well, that all depends on, that all depends on what
Setback
This is classified as, whether or not what it is classified as is illegal use, and when it came into existence. It depends on all of those things.
So, but that has not been the issue that's before the board. Now, let me tell you what we did provide you information about, which is that this is, and was inspected by the building inspector, and you folks certainly could have come down and taken a look. It is a one-room beach house. There's no beds in there, there's no bedroom. There's a little tiny sink, and a little toilet, and, and a little kitchenette.
You have pictures of the inside?
I'm sorry?
You guys have pictures of it?
For the inside?
On the inside?
Yeah, they did include some, I think.
I mean, we gave you a lot of pictures on the outside.
I don't think we have pictures of the inside.
There's one of you and your daughter.
But like I say, there's just, there's just, it is a fabrication to say that people are living in there, they're not. It's, the property isn't even used that much, and Mr. Clemmie can give you the history of it.
Let him finish.
To that point.
Just your name for the record.
My name is Bill Clumby, represent Winship LLC. We have four children, we have 13 grandchildren, every one of those grandchildren probably has 10 friends. Do we have people come down and hang out? All the time. Do we have them hanging out at the beach house at 8:00 at night, 9:00 at night, 2:00 in the morning, when I go down and yell at them to go to bed? Yes, we do. There's people that hang out, it's a beach house, it's next to the dock, they go swimming at midnight. They're kids, they're 15, 15 to 30 years old, that's what they do. The purpose of the building is to have a place to hang out while you're down the beach. Now, when somebody makes a comment about the air conditioning in this unit, my mother is 80 years old, she's on oxygen, she can't go outside. So, if she wants to come to the beach house next door to see all of her grandchildren hanging around, she needs air conditioning so she can breathe and be there. So, to say we need, it's a, there's no information that anybody has provided, other than a picture from 2005 that's blurry, that's way blurrier than any picture we've provided. 18 different exhibits, we've provided you. This is data, facts, actual exhibits. The only thing we've heard from the complainant is he said, "He decided he didn't like the decision of the building inspector." The building inspector contacted me, I called him back, I said, "David, what do you wanna do?" "I wanna come down and see the building." "No problem." I took him down, showed him the building, walked through it, walked around it, looked at everything. He said, "Bill, this is what I need. I need all the information on when the work was done, I need to know any historical data, and if you have pictures, that would be great." What did I do? I went and got him information. He said, "Bill, what you need to do is you need to go back now and get a permit for the electrical, the plumbing, and the building stuff that you've done to renovate the building." I said, "Dave, no problem, if that's what you want me to do, that's what I will do." We had the electrician, the plumber, we pulled out the permits for everything that was required." That's what he asked us to do. As a result, Dave said, "Bill, you've met everything that I've asked you to do, all the information you've given me, this is my position, I'm done." So, he, the building inspector, who is the enforcement officer, was satisfied with what we gave him for information, not a story, not, not an innuendo, actual information, data, in fact. And that's how he made his decision.
All right, sir.
Can I just say, one other
Go ahead, quick.
Because this
Please, quick.
It goes to the members' concern about, about is this a lawful structure or not? And let me suggest to you that it is, because we talked about this last week and I, last month, and I know you asked the building inspector about this, because this is a lawful accessory structure. You know, it is like a pool house, a beach house, they are lawful. And so, there's no question about the lawful use, there's no question about it having been in existence for a super long time. And, and the fact, and, you know, even though we've pulled these permits, and, and have, you know, complied with the requirements of the town, even if we hadn't, you can't look back beyond 10 years for structural, you know, changes and additions. That's what the, there's a 10-year limitation on that under Chapter 48, Section 7. So, with all due respect, the, the use is lawful, it's a lawful accessory structure, it is not being used as a residential dwelling, it is an accessory structure to a residential use, and we believe that we have, we're just, it's a lawful use, it's a lawful structure on a lawful lot. And so, we would just ask this board, you know, it, the board has to either
We'll decide on that, let gentlemen speak.
The only comment I have to make relative to this, you know, the length of time that this building has been there, and the classification of the building, et cetera, is that if you go to the Wayham Assessors database today, even with all the improvements that has been made, and the fact that it has a kitchen, kitchenette, a bathroom, whatever else, air conditioning, new windows, new siding, and so forth, it is still listed on the database as of right now as a shed, a boathouse shed, and it has an assessed value of $2,300. And the reason that that is, that case, contrary to what's been said here, is because all of this improvement that was done, was done under the radar, without any sort of permits, without any hearings, even though they're within, you know, feet from the water, there was never any conservation issues brought up, because they never applied for permits. And we were told originally by the, by the building inspector, that if we had complaints, that we should bring our complaints before this board, because this board had the enforcement authority to make, to set forth penalties. Now, if the statute of limitations is passed on all the structural issues, so be it. And we're not gonna sit here all night and argue about that, we have, there's no reason to it. If you have no other jurisdiction over anything any longer, again, so be it, we'll accept whatever decision you make. But again, our main concern was with the septic issue, and that issue isn't gonna go away.
That's, that's perfectly fine. Yes, sir. So, Johnny, you wanna say something?
Well, I mean, I'm not gonna argue what's lawful or not, I'm not a lawyer, but I can just tell you, people, I'm gonna read what I said earlier. People stay there overnight, from time to time.
Okay. All right, listen, excuse me, listen, no, no, please, no argue, listen, I wanna ask the town council quick.
I see cars parked in front of there, I see people going in and out, early morning ladies
I just wanted to say one thing
He has a
Well, can I finish my
He's not the town council
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I clarified that.
Independent
And I don't mean that disrespect, I mean, I appreciate you clarifying it.
Did you hear the argument?
I, I'm happy to weigh in on this, Mr. Chairman. What is in front of you, it seems, again, I have not seen any of the materials for this matter, is a request for zoning enforcement, a denial by the building inspector, and then an appeal of that denial. So, that's what is in front of you right now, is, has to do with the structure. And is the structure protected under general laws, Chapter 48, Section 7, from zoning enforcement? It was the determination of the building inspector that it is, that it's been more than 10 years since that structure's been in place. I would note that there's actually a relatively recent change to Chapter 48, Section 7, that states that a structure that exists for more than 10 years is actually deemed a pre-existing non-conforming structure. So, that actually has more protection than it used to have under the statute. So, if you have a pre-exist, if you have a structure that was not legal when it was originally constructed, passes that 10-year period, it can be changed in the same manner as any other non-conforming structure.
Go ahead, Carl.
Which raises the question
May I just say
One more time, please, let, let the member say something, please, go ahead, Carl.
Does the building permit that they pulled this summer, start the statute of limitations?
No, it does not. The, the structure existed
Okay.
Whenever it was originally built, they're allowed to make changes. Specifically, the statute allows modifications to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and in this case, a
Wait a minute
Non-compliant structure.
All right.
But I do, I do wanna note that there is another aspect to 48, Section 10. The use of a structure under 48, Section 10, is protected if it's more than six years and was commenced pursuant to the issuance of a wrongly issued building permit. If there was never any permit issued for the structure
Then yes.
Then, no. The, the structure is protected for 10 years, there is no protection for use if it's been more than 10 years. But it sounds like they're really, the building inspector didn't rule on use in this instance, the building inspector was discussing the structure, so it sounds like that's really the only thing that's appropriately before this board.
All right, John, I'm sorry.
If I, if I, one thing, 'cause I
Why not, please, John, let John say
He's really spoken. Just want to add one question, answer one part which...
Go ahead.
Was raised because he was, they were incorrect. They said that it's listed on any assessor's records as, he said, that's not correct. It's listed on, as a cabin. That's the list.
It is not. It's irrelevant what is listed on the thing. Ms. Decker, sir, please not, I, please don't argue. Sir, excuse me, don't argue. Let's get this done. It's getting late. We have a long hearing after you. Yes, John?
We talk about statute of limitations. It's my understanding of the law, if I'm correct, that when title changes on a property, it requires a town, um, uh, inspection regarding Title V and perhaps other reasons. That title has changed a couple of times and once fairly recently. So my question to the town of Wareham, who seems to have some thoughts on this issue, is why, why didn't you do your job? Why the hell weren't you down there and insisting that you be...
He's not.
He's not the town council.
John.
That you could conduct the right kind of inspection.
John.
Town council.
He's not a town council.
I don't know who the hell he is.
You accused him of being the town council, doing his job.
He's, he has...
We just, he's for a different case. We're just asking his opinion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right.
We're just asking his opinion.
I'll, I'll, I'll send that to my friend Charlie.
He's actually given us a very large courtesy.
Fine, okay. The, the point is, but my point is that that title has changed. And as I understand it, when the title changes, it requires certain, um, actions to be conducted through the town of Wareham for their approval.
What kind of actions? Title V? According to state laws, you're supposed to have a Title V, not a town laws.
All right, well, whatever law.
You know, but...
He, he doesn't care what law he breaks. He breaks them all.
What, what enforcement?
Look at his, look at his track record in every town he's ever been in.
You hearing what you heard? What enforcement do we have?
The only issue it sounds like is before you, and again, I have not reviewed the materials that were submitted. But it sounds like the only issue appropriately before you, the issue that was determined by the building inspector, is that the existing structure has been there for more than 10 years and therefore benefits from the relief of chapter 48, section 7. The use does not seem to be in front of you right now. The, the app, the, the property owner is not arguing that they have the benefit of, of a residential use in that structure.
Would it be correct that we put a motion on for this? That there is no overnight stay in that residential?
You do not have the right to condition a...
No, no.
Okay, go ahead.
We're going to ask him.
That's not what before us.
Okay, I'm asking him a question.
All right, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the, what is in front of you is whether or not to uphold the decision of the building inspector.
Correct.
Okay. So you can't really put conditions on that. If the building inspector was correct in his decision, there's no further action for the board to take.
Okay. Okay, Ken, go ahead. I make a motion, we close this. I've had enough of this.
I second it.
I make a motion that we close this.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Robert's rules of orders. Call the question.
Motion to close. Okay, do I have a motion to close by Carl? Second by Jim? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, it's closed.
Thank you.
All right. What's the board's wishes?
Take no action.
Tell your father.
You want to uphold, you want to uphold?
Building inspector's made a decision, and I think he made the correct decision.
I, the appeal, so. Okay, you guys, you can go to board and help. Whatever.
All right, so Jim's decision, Jim's motion is to uphold the, to uphold the building inspector's decision. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Aye.
I guess it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm going to play this call. Tell me my name was thrown around quite a bit tonight. May I speak for one second here?
No, it's closed.
I know, the meeting's closed. I just want to make a comment.
No.
If you want to make a comment...
Is that for this case?
Yes.
No.
This case, I just want to make a comment.
No, no, no comments.
I can wait till the end, then you'll still be here. But I'd like to make it where those two gentlemen are here. As you know, unless this post here, but I'll wait till you're in. But I can make a general comment, right?
At the end, we have general comments, yes. Thank you. All right, let's take five-minute recess. We got a little board member over this. We got a little board member over this.
Paul, it is a change of use that was being identified.
What's up?
It was a change of use that David Queen, the building inspector, had identified.
Building inspector identified that they were using it for residential purposes?
They didn't have a...
They didn't have the information. Here you go.
I said, I hadn't seen any portion of the file.
So this is, it's not really clear. Is he making a determination that it's being used for residential purposes? It's not really a straightforward...
No, it's not. He kicked the, the can down the street.
So, I mean, that's something that can still be raised.
Who's next? Dakota Properties?
All right, 2-18.
Dakota Partners, I'm sorry.
No, nobody's here. They're, they're outside.
I'll go get them. You got them? Thank you.
Paul, you get beaten.
I know, I know. Well, it was, I thought it was very gracious of you to give a legal position.
Probably wasn't too smart of me.
No, well, smarter, it, it helped diffuse the situation, I, I think. I really do. I appreciated your input. I truly did. And I recognize that you want to oblige us to do it. So that, to me, that makes it more valuable.
Oh, thank you.
You know, sometimes we don't place, you know, if you don't pay for something, you don't put any value on it. I put a lot of value on what you did this evening. Thank you.
He was an outsider, Jim.
That's correct.
And it was good to have his comments.
That's right. I have a terrible saying that free is, free advice is worth what it costs. But that wasn't advice, it was an opinion and a head merit.
I thought, I, I...
He said the same thing five times, and we just weren't hearing him.
All right.
Attention attire? qualifications. I almost came a choice.
We promised that this will be more contentious than the last hearing. No. That sounded quiet.
Do we have everybody back, all back yet?
All right.
Are we all set?
Very well. 2-18, Dakota Properties, 3102, Frederickburg, Public衕ments Open.
This is January 18th. Where's the new place?
Proceed. Name for the racket.
As revised.
James O'Brien with Dakota Partners.
Peter Freeman with Freeman Law Group, representing Dakota Partners.
You got one for...
Dominic Rinaldi with BSC Group, also representing Dakota Partners.
All right. So let's, let's go where we left off last time.
Right, so there were a bunch of things that were discussed from various consultants, et cetera. So what we said we would do, and we did it, and submitted several things. And I'll let Dom summarize the, the updates in a minute or two. I don't need to take long. But basically, we submitted the plans that have what we believe accommodates or responds to positively all of your requests. I say that, there may be one or two things, but I'm pretty sure that we really have done everything that you've asked. Likewise, in terms of proposed conditions, there were, there was a brief discussion at the hearing with some written proposed conditions from, I think, Mr. Buckland and maybe Mr. Rowley. And in any case, and, and we'd already received a draft decision from your consultant, Paul Haverdy, prior to that. But we didn't go through at the last hearing, the draft decision and all. So in the interim, albeit, I think we just were able to send it to you yesterday. But we did incorporate, and we believe we did it faithfully, to what was discussed and what we said we could do. We incorporated a whole bunch of conditions addressing the various things that had come up into the draft decision. So my thought tonight is really two or threefold. As I said in a minute, I think just to help acclimate everybody, including the members of the audience, Dom should summarize the updates on the plans that responds. I don't think that'll take too long. And then, other than questions, of course, I think it might make sense to go through the decision, at least the conditions, to see if we've addressed satisfactorily the things that had been discussed. And then we're hoping, certainly again, after questions and answers tonight, we're hoping that, in fact, everything would have been submitted and that we would have done as much as we can and that the hearing could be closed tonight. So that's where, where we're at.
All right. We'd like a, an update with, with the sewer, the water. What do you guys, how do you guys make out of them?
Sure, Dom, that's, that's part of what Dom can summarize. And again, we put conditions in there which were similar, not exactly, to the conditions that had been drafted by the fire district, the water department of the fire district. But we have incorporated them into our draft decision. So Dom, why don't you just take over and summarize all the various things, including those points?
Uh, sure. We do have copies of the draft decision and the waivers as requested by Mr. Buckland.
All right, well, let's go board by board. How do you make out with the sewer?
Fine. The, the one thing that they had wanted was the grinder pumps. And we have, there was back and forth as to a particular type that Dom had with Mr. Campina, which I believe was agreed to, and we've put that as a condition into the permit.
Yep, and those grinder pumps are shown on the plans with detail.
All right. Let me bring Mr. Campina. Can you come forward, let's see?
Yeah, please, right there.
Just the name for the racket so she could pick on it.
Good evening, Guy Campina, sewer director.
Okay, so have, is that what they're saying you did?
They had sent, uh, we, I was on vacation, I corresponded with the engineer regards to, yes, we are requiring grinder pumps as mitigation for the rags and unflushables.
All right.
And that would bring up some conditions in as it needs to have a maintenance agreement submitted to the water pollution control facility. There needs to be some type of backup power in event of power going out. I haven't seen anything on that. So I would like to see that also. It needs to be recorded on the deed that there are in fact grinder pumps with that facility in the event it's ever sold. So those are the kind of things that we could probably talk about further, but it should be addressed, I think, in the conditions so they're adhered to. And then the other things we agreed to, which was the $5 per gallon for the INI fee. There was some talk about, they know the EDU ate, they got to pay on each unit. I, I think those are the things we talked about. And the phasing, one, two, three years of the project. Also, that the condition of the motel going before the first phase. All that stuff was in our letter. And so I want to make sure that all those things are included in the, in the conditions and the agreements.
Is your commi, your board of commissioners, are they on board with this?
We, we've discussed it at many, many board meetings, absolutely. And matter of fact, the chairman's here if you have any specific questions for him.
Okay, and you guys voted, you okay with this? What they prob, with the conditions? They okay with the conditions?
Yes, they've agreed to the conditions previous to this. And I think the grinder pump they presented will be, will suffice because there's one grinder pump per building. And I believe when I saw the plans, each grinder pump had four pumps, which is very acceptable because they're going to see quite a bit of flow and some, a lot of non-flushables. So I think they're addressing that. The only thing they haven't addressed is power. If the power goes out, then the units are in trouble. But I think as the owners of that building, they'd be concerned. They would probably put, we would suggest strongly and probably say that the, the backup power would, would make sure that sewer never stops.
All right. Counselor, do you have, do you have these conditions? Are these conditions being drafted?
I, I did, I...
Yeah, the most recent version does have a number of those conditions in there.
Yeah, they, just going through them, I didn't mention in my brief summary. But yes, we did put in the maintenance agreement, the backup power, um, the...
Phasing.
The, the phasing is already in there. And I think, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the chairman is correct that we, and Mr. Campina, that you had agreed on those fees, the $5, the, the INI fee, $5 per gallon.
I did. I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
And also that other fee, which we didn't put in. It might be a good idea, both on this and anything else, to put in what the fees that have been agreed to are. I did not put that in. The only thing that was just mentioned by Mr. Campina that I didn't put in because I didn't know about it, if it was in the letter, I apologize, is something about some acknowledgement in the deed that there's a grinder pump. I've never seen anything like that, so I'm not saying it's impossible. But I don't want to create a chilling effect and a conveyancing, you know, restriction that is unusual, but we can work on that. I just don't quite know what the intent is. I mean, if the approved plans require the grinder pumps, then you have the right of enforcement, and so do they. If, you know, they're not maintained, I'm not sure what a deed, you know, what a deed provision would mean.
The deed, to you, Mr. Chairman, the deed provision, make sure that the pumps are maintained. It's in the deed that there are grinder pumps and they're to be maintained. So if they're on the deed, if anything was to happen in the problem, property, 10 years from now they sold it, that goes with the property, that yes, the maintenance agreement must be in place to protect the grinder pumps, which has a bit of force main to it. And then it goes with the property opposed to the...
Right, let me ask you something. If the pump failed, doesn't, I mean, then you have an overflow, right?
If the pump fails, they don't have no overflow. The pump fails, that's why I believe they have four. So for four pumps to fail is very unlikely.
Right.
So one would fail, then you'd have four kicking in. So...
So you want on the deed rider that the pumps always exist. But if they fail, they'll, they'll have overflow.
Then that's where the maintenance agreement comes in.
Okay.
Because someone has to check on those pumps regularly to make sure that they're working properly and that there's no issues. And by a maintenance agreement, it, it assures us that it's going to be working properly.
Who checks on that?
They hire a maintenance company to do that, absolutely.
You know, I, I, I'm certainly, Mr. Campina, and I'm not quibbling at all with the substance and your intent is just mechanically, you know, you can't just put something in there that has any impact because it's not like an easement with those two parties. I'm thinking out loud, and Paul, perhaps we could just work on it before the next meeting.
You guys can do that.
You know, that, that something...
Mr. Campina, Jen just said what he's saying.
Would already be in the deed that it's subject to the comprehensive permit, but perhaps it could be highlighted that, you know, including but not limited to that requirement or something like that.
Let me make it simple to you. So in other words, when, if you put something on the deed, when you buy a house has a well, you can't put in the deed that the well pump has to be maintained. That's something similar, right? That's what you...
That's what I'm, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So you can restrict it on the deed.
Well, in, in our bylaws that speak about, or our sewer, in the ordinances that speak about force main, because part of that is forced out, it's pumped out, it states in that byline upper, presented to you, that it needs to be on the deed.
We could restrict it on...
I think the purpose of that sort of a requirement really goes more towards single-family houses. And it's, I think, to put the person who's purchasing on notice that there is a grinder pump and that they are going to be responsible for maintaining it. In this instance, when you're talking about apartment buildings, you know, the, the people that own the entire complex are certainly going to be well aware of it. And the decision, if you look at H9 of the draft decision, a sewer grinder pump consistent with the email correspondence between the applicant's engineer, Dominic Rinaldi, and Wareham Waste Water Pollution Control Facility Superintendent Guy Campina on August 10th and August 13th, 2018, shall be installed in each residential building. Applicants shall maintain a maintenance contract annually for the grinder pumps and shall provide the WPCF with a copy of same. There should be an emergency power backup supplied to the control panels for the grinder pumps. So it's already in the decision. So it's already in the decision. The decision is applicable, and anybody that's purchasing the entire apartment complex will go through this decision with a fine-tooth comb.
With a fine-tooth comb.
Because it's not gonna be, you know, an inexperienced, single-family house purchaser, it's going to be a very large company, corporation, or whatever. They're gonna be well aware.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
So I, so what I'm trying to, so Mr. Campina wants to ensure-
There's no enforcement mechanism for putting it into a deed, whereas there's a very important-
If we could put it under, under conditions, because Mr. Campina just probably concerned, like, if a new owner comes in and take all the pumps out mainly.
No, that's what I put in.
All right. Is that satisfactory to you?
Requires annual-
Absolutely.
Maintenance contract, yeah. Requires a maintenance contract, and they have to update it annually to the departments.
Okay. Is that good?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Very good. So are we also, you have any more?
I have nothing else.
So we're good. Charlie, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the backup power, because each tank where these pumps are located, they're only 500 gallons.
500? I thought you were gonna do 2,500.
If the power goes out and that tank is all but full, and the pumps haven't been tripped, and you don't have automatic emergency power that comes on to trigger that pump, you're gonna have overflowing tanks all the time.
Yeah.
So I think we need to hear more about what that emergency power is gonna consist of.
You know, certainly fine point, but here's the scoop, and I'm not trying to be invasive in any way, just the opposite. We don't get into that type of minutia at a 40B hearing yet. It's a detail. We're more than happy to supplement the condition that I wrote, that Mr. Haverty just read, that would say that the exact specs for the backup battery power shall be subject to the review and approval of the sewer department. You know, that's, that's-
All right. So you're gonna have a-
It's not just backup power for the panel, it's a backup power to make sure the pump
goes, and you don't do that.
But with all due respect, and Paul, Mr. Haverty, you can chime in, the plans at this stage are not to the level of that detail like construction drawings with all the electrical detail. With all due respect, that is just really overkill. The point is-
All right. But let me, Counselor, but let me say something. Hypothetically speaking, say we lose power for a week, what's gonna happen?
No, no, I'm not objecting to that. What I'm saying is that to say that we still need to somehow submit plans now to-
No, we don't need plans, but we need just-
Add to the condition, add to the condition that they shall be shown on the plans and shall be approved by the sewer department. That's sufficient to protect-
Okay. So you have a backup generator or bigger tanks?
That's what it says. The condition says that, a backup, a back-
Mr. Chairman, that does not answer my question. My question is the type of backup. If it's a little 5,000 watt generator that somebody pulls out of a shed and plugs in, that's no good. It should be a permanent fixture with a generator that automatically comes on if the power goes out.
Well, I'm assuming that's what's supposed to do.
So, and again, that level of detail can be reviewed at the time of the review of the final plans.
So long as, so long as the, the conditions are that it is automatic and that it comes on, that it doesn't have to depend on somebody running out there with a five-gallon can of gasoline to keep it going, okay.
Well, I don't, yeah, I think that has to be a good-
You gotta specify something.
Standby generator.
Where's this generator going?
I've never-
They have to have a bad part somewhere.
But those are, again, as Mr. Haverty said, and I don't mean in any way that I'm disagreeing with the substance of what Mr., you know, Rowley is saying, it's just that it is more than sufficient protection that we add that, you know, that it shall be on the plans and subject to the final approval, plan approval.
I understand that, but where's it, you know, the big commercial generators are pretty big, so where's it going? We already have a problem with it.
Doesn't have to, doesn't need very big generator.
Yeah, it's just for the, I mean, it's just for the, you know, for the-
The pumps.
The pump. Not even the pump, the, it's not, you know, the grinder, the grinder, yeah.
Sign at the size of that table, that's it.
I'm not concerned about the size of it at this point. I'm concerned that it is automatically triggered, that if the power goes out, that pump-
That is the intent.
Automatically come on because the generator kicks in and supplies the power to the pump.
That's certainly the intent. I think we all know that it doesn't do any good if it doesn't automatically come on, so we can add that detail.
So how about the details of the emergency power backup shall be shown on the final plans and shall be subject to the review and administrative approval of the board or its consulting engineer. At minimum, such emergency power shall be of sufficient size and should be automatically triggered upon a power outage.
That's fine with me, other than I think it's better for you folks if it's reviewed and approved by the sewer department.
Can you add, reviewed by the sewer department?
Sure.
And approved by sewer department?
Something in there, I said, it's also-
As opposed to, you know, your reviewing engineer.
Yes.
We mentioned EDU. We mentioned EDU, and I assume the EDU is gonna be the exact same EDU that per unit as any single-family residence in Wareham would pay. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's any single-family and any multifamily, any apartment dwelling is the same.
Earlier, when I was reading, I saw an agreement with a specific number.
596, but that's subject to change as the rates change.
I want it in, that's, my reason for my question is I want the record, on record, that that number only reflects the current EDU and that the EDU will be adjusted to reflect the same EDU as any other residents in the town of Wareham. Is that correct?
That's very correct.
Exactly what we want.
And that could change by the-
So it's not specific to the number that's mentioned?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, the 596 is already changed.
It's already changed.
They've already approved a 5% increase, so that'll reflect on their first building process.
I want to make sure the applicant understands.
We agreed upon this last time.
You don't have a fixed agreement. You have a-
No, Mr. Chairman, we were clear that we would oblige by any published rates as they change from time to time.
Okay.
Just like rent goes up, everything goes up.
That was my question. My other question is, I keep hearing the $5 per gallon, and I'm not getting what that's referencing.
So what it references, for every gallon that they send to us, they'll pay us $5 to remove infiltration and inflow. And it's in, I believe it's CMR 314, I believe it's 12, addresses the fact of a property of a 15,000 gallons per day where DEP says we must address INI. So that's what that pertains to.
So you charge them $5 a gallon?
One-time fee.
One-time fixed fee.
Once.
For each phase, because there are three phases, so it'll be a $5 per gallon for the first phase, $5 per gallon for the second phase, and $5 per gallon for the third phase.
And the per gallon is the estimated flow?
Is the flow, yes.
Okay, okay.
That money will go to repair some infiltration, indirect infiltration somewhere else.
I just didn't understand what it was.
Yeah, that's what, I, okay, so we're good with sewer?
I believe so.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One down. Water. Let's hear it. Let's finalize things one at a time. Thank you for coming, Mr. Campina.
Thank you, Mr. Campina.
And the board, and your board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Where we at?
Onset Water Department. We're pretty much in agreement with just about everything, I do believe, except maybe one or two sticking points, unless there is no sticking points, which would be perfect.
Mr. Chairman, the-
Has to do with the monitoring wells.
We have agreed to the two monitoring wells in the northeast corner of the property.
Yeah.
I just wanted the decision to allow me to negotiate further with the water company in the location of those, whether it be on our property or their property. We'll oblige by either one that the water company wants, but the way the decision is reading is that we monitor it, let's say, for two or three years, then they take over the monitoring. So what I need to understand is the liability of them coming onto our property if they're monitoring from year three forward for perpetuity.
Do you have a problem to be one for in your property?
We would prefer it is on their property because we also have a liability concern.
What we said, just to be clear, is, and this is in what we submitted, prior to the commencement of construction of the project, the applicant shall install two water monitoring wells in the northeast corner of the project site, or as otherwise agreed to by the applicant in the onset fire district water department. So we can't have it elsewhere unless they agree.
All right. Let me ask a question. You're gonna monitor it two years later, after two years?
Through all three phases, they will monitor afterward.
Okay. And then it's yours.
Excuse me. Afterward, we will take over, after phase three.
Wouldn't you think it makes sense to be in your property? I mean-
Well, that's something we would have to discuss if-
It makes perfect sense for four, five years, and then forever, it's you're gonna take care of it, so it makes more sense.
And Mr. Chairman, I want to have the opportunity to talk with the water department about additional insurance or anything I can do to get them satisfied during the three or four-year period.
Right.
But it really then would be their responsibility, and we don't want for perpetuity, if unnecessary, to keep accessing our site.
What do you think, Ben? It does make sense, doesn't it? I mean, if they give you insurance until the project's done-
To some degree. I mean, there's two different things here. Liability on our part, okay, for the first three phases, and then after that, we would really like the wells on the piece of property that's being developed.
I have a question. Is there any merit in putting the wells on the property line so that during the time of development, they can access it from their property, and at the time that you take over, you can access it from your property?
That wouldn't be an issue.
And either party has entered the other party's property.
Putting his.
Putting it right on the property line.
Well, they're very small and-
I understand what they are. They're a hole in the ground.
But then you still have-
You want them on your land, he don't want you on his land. Put it on the line. You come from your side, they come from their side. Everybody's happy.
Counselor, what do you think?
Mr. Chairman, the decision as currently drafted requires it to be on the property site unless the applicant is able to agree to a different location with the water department. I don't see why that needs to be changed.
Yeah, we're agreeing that we will have them on our side if they ultimately insist on it, but we hope to show a good case. It doesn't make sense, because now we have to have easements, access.
They won't be able to move them unless the water department agrees to it.
It's drafted in such a way that it does not require any further action from us.
Right, right.
If I'm, if I'm the chairman of the-
If I may, there's three phases here, and we're talking, what, six to seven years in development possibility?
Right.
So, you know, if things appear clear after six to seven years, there might not be a need, but this is something we could discuss further. But as it is now, I agree with Counselor there.
This gives you the opportunity to do that if you so choose, and it allows you to not do that if you choose.
Right.
Okay. What do you think?
Yeah, I'm okay, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, because in, in year five or six, I might even just drill two new wells for them and put them on their site.
Yeah. Probably be cheaper than-
Yeah, I just wanted the opportunity to discuss it with them.
All right. Very well. Jen, you good with that? Everybody's good so far? Wilma, you good so far? All right. So we keep the draft the way it is. More concerns? Your fees, everything, it's been worked out?
Everything appears to be solid and good to go.
All right. That's down. Second down. Third thing. Thank you. All right. What we got now?
Well, I think just a brief summary of what Dom added to the plans relating to things like the bus, and I won't attempt to remember, so I'll just turn it over to Dom.
Want me to over there and just yell?
Yeah. Let's hear it. Just turn the mic a little bit so it catches as much as you can.
Sure.
There you go. Get a little closer to the mic here. Bring it, if you don't mind, just drag it, yeah. Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
All right. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So some of the things that came up at the last hearing, came up in Mr. Rowley's review that we've done, we took the delivery parking area, we actually enlarged it a little bit, and we shifted it south in the driveway so it no longer conflicts with fire access to the community building here. We have gone ahead and changed the curbing. I believe what we end up with is we're doing the extruded concrete everywhere where there's a sidewalk, and everywhere else, we've gone to Cape Cod burn. So on the outside of the property primarily, it'll be Cape Cod burn. On the inside, it'll be primarily the extruded concrete. We shuffled around the accessible parking spaces so that there are two adjacent to each of the 36-unit building, one adjacent to each of the other buildings, and there's actually an extra one down here, one more than we technically need, and this one's sort of, while not designated for use, it's kind of the idea of if someone wanted to drive over to this walkway to the community building, they could park there. We also did designate some visitor spaces per your request. They're located on the plan with signs, they're up here and, basically-
Scattered?
Scattered throughout, in the general vicinity of each building. We did add two bus shelters down here by the Redbrook Road entryway on concrete pads, obviously for, whether it's for schoolchildren or just general pickup and drop off on the site.
Were you able to make this entrance both ways for Redbrook, not one way, like left and right, like Mr. Hadley mentioned?
Well, let, no, we didn't change that on the plan. What we said, which is what I believe was discussed, is, let me find the traffic conditions. Hold on one sec. What I added was, the applicant shall request that Mastod approved plan showing that the planned vehicular access to and from the project site on Redbrook Road include a dedicated left-turn lane to enter the site from Redbrook Road. If Mastod does not approve that or this, then the Redbrook Road access shall be as shown on the approved plan. So either way, the plan show not restricted to right turn in and right turn out. It actually should be phrased a little better, but if Mastod allows the left-hand turn lane, then that's fine. What we have drafted it is if they don't allow it, we're saying it should be as shown on the plans, which to be direct does not restrict the left turn out or in.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
And the last main item we did was, per your request, we've enhanced the landscape plan. You'll see there's additional landscaping, definitely around the edges, and more in the central area as well.
All right. Jen, any comments?
I have none.
Wilma?
I, I just have a few questions about lighting.
Lighting, yeah?
Yeah.
For parking lighting?
Lighting in the parking lot, lighting out in the-
In the play area?
In the play area.
What you have in?
Let's see. I just, I just think, I was just counting the number of lights on there, planned, and I don't, I don't think they're, I think where they park the cars and the lights, there should be another light.
Dominic, do you want to address the lighting?
Yeah, hold on, let me just-
It's just, I'm just thinking, people walking there, and they need some, they need more light than what you have laid out. I mean, as I counted number of lights, I mean, it's... I wasn't going to say too much until I started counting lights.
So, we have provided photometric plans for the overall project.
What page, C4?
C7, 7-1 and 7-2.
Okay.
So, it's the back.
I'm sorry, say those numbers again?
C7.
All right, go ahead.
7-1 and 7-2. 7 is the overall. There's a detail of the type of light we're proposing there as well as fixture counts and what have you. The parking areas are done in compliance with industry standards for lighting in terms of both total foot handle and differential. So, you can see that on the plan. As you get to the middle of the site, you know, into the courtyard area, we really weren't looking to create a heavily lit, you know, area. This is still, people live there. You don't want a ton of lighting for the people looking out effectively into their backyard during the night. There is lighting. You can see down, it'll by the community building in the playground as well. And that portion of the walkways, to make sure that that area is lit in the evening. But the intent is primarily to light the parking areas for safety and access, you know, front of the buildings. And then as you get into the back, it dims out a bit.
And so, the courtyard has no lights?
Other than down by the community building, no.
How about like the walkways and stuff? You don't have like four footers maybe, some lights, like four feet?
Not kind of like ballered lighting, no, except down by the community building right now.
Okay. So, what do you say, Wilma?
But I feel in the parking area, the people getting out of their cars at night, now, you're not considering that these you kind of consider these are people getting out of work late, especially in the winter time.
Right.
And they need more light to get out of their car. I mean, especially a woman. She's working the night shift and she's getting out. There's not people, there's nobody around looking.
Do you see C7? It shows like how the lighting does?
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm counting parking spaces and the lights. And as I said, it's just, I'm just thinking of, out, thinking of a person getting out at night. I mean, these things that happen in broad daylight.
Right. And what I'm saying is the lighting layout was done by the lighting manufacturer to industry standards for lighting industry standards for parking lot safety.
All right. It looks good lighting for the parking. It seems pretty good. What do you think, Jen?
It's by industry standards. You might argue that.
All right.
You know, like I said, the courtyard currently is not, whatever you want to call it, the middle.
But the parking, you have to light it though.
Right.
All right, very good.
Well, I was gonna say still.
All right, let's keep going. What else you got?
And I have one more thing. If they're gonna be putting in a generator to, for these grinder pumps, where are they going to put the generators?
Well, they're gonna specify on the plan what they put up when they come with the construction.
I mean, because you look on the plan and the way they have everything, it's what you'd call empty space. They want it to be grass and situated, you know. I mean, I'm just saying that you can't be last minute throwing in the generators, especially where there's going you're going to have to finish how many grinder pumps.
No, Mr. Chairman, what we have been thinking about and probably will show you on the final plans is a generator behind the community building, close to the commercial side so that the noise, whatever there is for noise, is not affecting the residents as much. They are very quiet today. And according to the decision, E9, I think we have not asked for any waivers from the Wareham bylaw on lighting. So, we have met the industry standards and I believe met the bylaw as well for safety and lighting compliance in the parking lot. And I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
And speaking to your point, which is a good one, we're not saying it would be last minute because it's already in the way it's drafted that all plans, including things for generators, et cetera, would be part of the final plan set so that, you know, you would not have to approve them if we somehow omit it. So, that's the safety net for you.
All right. I want to go to Charlie. I know he had a bunch of comments. I didn't get, I came in last night, I didn't have time to read your comments.
I don't have any additional, I don't have any additional comments over than what I had and made some notes that are based on the August 10th reply from BSC Group. I do have some comments or some questions, though, based on what we've discussed today. Some of the things that were mentioned in the plan, changes the delivery area was changed to south of an access point for the community building. Is that going to be done at Phase 1?
Sir?
No, we have a turnaround at the end of Phase 1 during the phasing plan, so that should accommodate the trucks temporarily. We're gonna do that in Phase 2 because that's when the...
Where are the deliveries going to be taken?
What do you mean?
We've got a community building and you've said that all deliveries from delivery trucks are gonna go to that community building, not to the individual buildings. If you do Phase 1, where is the delivery truck gonna come in? Where's he gonna go? Where's he gonna drop stuff off?
So, Phase 1 comes in off of the Route 28 entrance. There is a turnaround at the end of the entrance and he'll have to stop in front of parking to deliver till we have Phase 2 underway.
And where does he deliver to?
The community building, the same process.
No community building in Phase 1?
Oh, we have a management office. I'm sorry. We provide a management office for Phase 1 as one of the units until Phase 2 and the community building is built. That's a very good question. I should have made that point. That's how we do the phases for both lease-up and control of the site during Phase 1.
Why couldn't the, there be management space in each building so that deliveries could be taken to each building?
We don't have staff for each building or a program that allows that, Mr. Rowley. We have a certain program that we follow and that's what we want to continue to do.
That's your thing. I'm talking, I'm trying to think about the people who are gonna live there and how they're gonna get access to the delivery parcels. What time of day will that community building be open so that deliveries can be anticipated by the UPS guy or the FedEx guy or whoever brings it in from Amazon or whoever?
Fair question, and I can tell you that I've not seen any projects that have two management offices, especially in Phase 1, there's just two buildings. Again, fair point, but the answer is practical and sufficient. So, first point I just made. Second point is, I'm familiar with many even condominiums, whether it's rental or condominiums, but when there's multiple buildings, there is one central building, regardless of phasing, there's one central building where the deliveries are made. And again, in fact, with the community building, once it's in place, that's the one place where deliveries are gonna be made. So, it's no different if somebody in the only one other building in Phase 1 has to walk a short distance to the management office in the other building. It's routine. It's done industry-wide across the country. That's the way these, you know, multifamily developments operate. They don't have multiple management offices or multiple places for delivery. So, again, it's very limited. It's just two buildings in Phase 1. They'll be very close to each other.
Mr. Chairman, I continue to have issues with the delivery system, the method by which people will pick those up, the access ways by which they will get to make, to get those deliveries. I addressed the issue about the access to the community building and not having a mountable curb. It was told to me that the fire department wanted a mountable curb. That means that anybody who has a large package that needs to get picked up is gonna have to walk that package from the community building out through the loading area, which is more than 200 feet away in most cases. There was no driveway that anyone can drive a vehicle into that community building and pick up a decent-sized package. It's not gonna be easy. We're not making this easy for any of the residents who are gonna be in there to facilitate this place. You made, took a poll last time that you didn't want to have paving on the pathways in there. Evidently, there's not gonna be any lighting and the deliveries are still gonna be difficult. I just think that we're not getting the proper kind of a development on the internal circulation in places where people are gonna live, day in and day out.
So, will you suggest a road to the community building?
I would ask that you give a little bit more consideration to what is being done here for the benefit of the residents who are gonna be there, not to the benefit of the developer.
Okay, so what do you suggest?
Mr. Chairman, what's a benefit to the tenant is indeed a benefit to the developer. And these developments, which are tightly regulated and have investors who want to make sure that they're kept up well and there's satisfied tenants and a good rental stream and all of that. So, the responsible developer, which this developer is, has an incentive to make sure that things work for the tenants, number one. Number two, again, trying to respond to the point, I'm not saying that the point is in any way crazy, but we've satisfied it reasonably because it's been changed so that there is a place where the delivery trucks and in the, you know, times when there is an owner who has a quite large package, they can pull up temporarily. I mean, that's been accommodated. So, again, in all these multifamily developments, it's really no different. You know, somebody's unit may be X feet away and they walk whatever feet it is to the development office. Yes, if they have to, you know, have a car to pick it up, a few times that happens, there's pull-up space.
Jim, what do you think of that delivery thing?
I think that, I think that we can live with what's been offered. I can live with what's...
Carl, what do you think?
I'm fine with the plan.
The way it is or?
Yeah.
Jen, what do you think?
So, I don't want to go take a step back, but what about some, to the no lighting in the interior, one of Mr. Rowley's, what about some ground lighting at certain spots around this walkway?
Sure. Yeah, we can offer some ballered lighting that, we just don't want it too bright. We just want to light the pathway itself, so...
The four footers, yeah, like three footers.
Yeah, the little three-footed ballards that will light the path. We have no problem with that.
Can we add this to the draft, Paul? Some ballered lighting on the path. So, Jen, back to the delivery thing, what do you think?
Currently, we got it, UPS is gonna draw, and mail are gonna drop everything on the community building.
And everybody has to go on?
Residents are gonna go to the community building and pick up their packages. UPS guy's gonna have to walk it in 200 feet from that loading spot.
I don't have any, I don't have any problem with UPS walking 200 feet.
They're gonna have to overcharge. What do you think, Jen?
I mean, as a matter of convenience, it would, you know, I'm not particularly concerned.
So, Charlie, what do you recommend? Like have a driveway to the community building, like?
Of course, and at least a couple of parking spots where somebody who is handicapped needs to go and pick up his package, he doesn't have to walk 200 or 300 feet to get there. And he's got to do it over the best access, which is a grasscrete area that's been put in for the fire department. There's no access to that building for the guy that might be a little bit handicapped or needs to go in and get a package. It's too big for him to carry that far. They're not giving any consideration to the guy that is gonna be living there.
Well, they've got it so that they can drive their car right to the building if they need to.
No, you can't.
Just a pass.
They're proposing a mountable curb, Jen.
That's the mountable curb and the grasscrete for the fire department access to the building. But we do have a walkway all the way up to the building. We manage 1,200, 1,500 units the same way. They drop off a key, they go down and get their package. If the package is large enough or if there's any handicap needs, they'll be done during the day when the management and manager is there to help accordingly. We have two-wheelers within the clubhouse.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you have...
So, you know, all of these issues are really just management, how we control our property, and it's worked so far and worked well. We're really interested in the aesthetics, that it look correctly, that it have the right elements. That's what we're looking at, and they've run in the past just fine.
So, you do have equipment available to use for
Absolutely.
loading heavy packages that are available.
Yes, yes.
And would your management, in the event that a handicapped individual or individual is not ambulatory, needed assistance? Is that what they...
Absolutely, yes. We're there to accommodate in any way possible. They would have to have it during working hours, but there'd be assistance there.
All right, I guess the majority is for the plan, Charlie.
No other comments tonight?
No?
No.
Okay. What else you want to offer?
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, again, those are the things that we have done in response and we think, again, are obviously satisfactory to us because we made the changes and presented them. I know that you need to review things and deliberate. It's not that late. I think it might make sense to go through the conditions, the decision and mostly the conditions tonight. And again, repeating what I said earlier, it sounds like we're ready to close the hearing. That doesn't mean you have to vote the decision tonight, although we'd love that if you want to. But, you know, close the hearing and then we're allowed to continue to have back and forth as long as there's no new evidence at another meeting to, you know, refine the decision and hopefully, you know, have it voted and approved at that meeting.
All right. Anyone in the audience want to speak tonight? Yes, Mrs. Slaven.
We have a letter here too.
We'll read it after. Most of the stuff's been addressed, but yes, sir.
Alan Slaven, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. We just got paperwork on this yesterday. And also, everybody else listed on the list of disbursements, got it yesterday. Therefore, nobody on any board has had a chance to read and respond back, which is supposed to come to the board anyways, even though you make the decision. So, at this point here, I request that you delay this until everybody has a chance to at least look at it, make any comments, so the ZBA can make a decision based on all the boards responding to the latest plan.
Is the draft decision?
Draft decision, also the actual plans. The plans just came to the boards yesterday.
So, you need more time?
None of the boards have had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, counsel, do you have a problem? Give us an extension?
Well, if you think it's best to, I respect that, by the way. I understand that. That's a point well taken. I would think it would be sufficient to still have, you know, close the hearing and have commentary. But I suppose technically, if it's commentary that hasn't been, you know, included so far, that would be reason to have the hearing open. So, you know, we can talk for a second if you want, but what we would, you know, again, there's also filing deadlines coming up for the tax credits and all of that. So, it's not just being arbitrary, saying we want to try to push it along. All of that said, it does sound reasonable if we can set, you know, the timeframe tonight so that we know all of that review will have taken place for the next hearing and assume that it's closed at that point, which I think could at that point include the review, and call me a cockeyed optimist, but maybe it could even be, you know, voted that night if there's all the comments in and everybody has a chance, including you folks. Again, I apologize, as I said, that you didn't get it till today, until yesterday. I wasn't expecting that you would, you know, affirm the whole decision today. So, if we can set that timeframe, again, it's a reasonable request.
Okay. So, you'll give us an extension, two weeks for next hearing?
Yeah, two weeks, if that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah. Deadline, we have to act by the 27, but you'll have no problem. Give us an extension until the 12?
Is it close the hearing?
Until September 12?
There's a difference between closing the hearing and then the time to...
Well, we can't, if we close it, we can't discuss it anymore. That's the thing.
You can deliberate after. And I like to have an opportunity.
Comments from other boards.
Let's see, counsel, yes?
Once the board closes the hearing, it cannot take any more comments from outside of the board. It is 40 days from that point to deliberate amongst itself and then issue its decision. I think the comment from Attorney Freeman is a good one in that you certainly could extend the hearing without closing it, continue to do the work that you otherwise would have done if you had closed so that you have a nearly complete decision for discussion at the next hearing, at which point you could have received all additional commentary from other boards and you'll actually be ready to vote and issue your decision potentially. But I wouldn't feel comfortable with this board closing the hearing, taking any additional information.
Right. Right. And you have enough time to get back to us for the 12 if they give us an extension?
So, what would the next?
The Board of Selectmen meets on the 28th.
September 12.
And the other boards meet within the next couple of weeks.
Suggest you ask for at least a week after.
Extension, right.
Just in case for some reason you don't, can't make a quorum on the 12th and you're not here.
We'll get an extension, we'll ask for an extension for the, if they agreed to.
12th, I'd ask for the 19th. This way, if for some reason something happens on the 12th and this board can't meet, you know, there's a hurricane.
Right, okay.
The conference hall's closed.
So, for the 19th?
Actually, you have 48 hours notice, hold a new hearing the next...
All right, we'll ask for an extension for the 19th.
Do we meet on the 19th?
That is not regularly scheduled meeting, but...
Just in case there's an emergency.
You wouldn't necessarily plan to meet on the 19th. You'd meet on the 12th.
But in case there's an emergency.
Having the extension go to the 19th allows you, in case of an emergency, to scramble and get another properly noticed hearing.
All right.
Held, so that you can just show up, close the public hearing, and not be run into a constructive grant.
On your meeting in September, can you check your calendar to see if that's either the Jewish New Year or Yom Kippur?
The 19th is.
19th is. Just so you understand, if Yom Kippur is on the 19th.
Thank you for asking, yeah.
Mr. Freeman and myself would not be available. Our grandparents and our parents would kill us.
It doesn't mean you would have to meet on the 19th. You could meet on the 18th or 19th.
How about the 18th?
One of the extension would go to the 19th. You can meet any time before that.
The 12th, you're okay, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He has another hearing.
I got it.
I'm just trying to give you a little bit of breathing room, please.
Right. The reason I ask is the Jewish New Year is two days, the holiday. And that's the second highest holiday of the year in the Jewish religion. The first is Yom Kippur. Actually, Sabbath is right there as well.
So, what day in September?
I'm just saying, if you're showing Yom Kippur is on the 19th, you probably have the Jewish New Year the second day on the 12th.
But this is only for emergency, what the counsel says.
Right. It doesn't mean we have to meet on the 19th. It's just you have got a little flexibility.
What I'm trying to say is you're meeting the week before. What date does it fall on?
The 12th.
Is it the Jewish New Year?
Right. Which you wouldn't have to be.
It should be in the calendar, yeah.
It doesn't show up, in my feeling.
You just want to double-check because, again, you know, we both, both are supposed to be in temple both those days.
You know, I'm 10% Jewish too, so I should be practicing, right? All right, anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Don Jefferson, Prefecting 3. Brought along with me the nitrogen consensus report and the update of that, which is the Massachusetts Estuary Project. And the reason I bring them along is because the Massachusetts Estuary Project for the Wareham River Estuary estimated that approximately one-third of the nitrogen currently flowing into the Wareham River must be eliminated in order to restore the river to its former health. Unfortunately, the sewer commission isn't here. They've already spoken. But the largest contributor of nitrogen to the Wareham River is the Wareham wastewater treatment plant. The overarching conclusion of the MEP analysis, which is the Massachusetts Estuary Project analysis of the Wareham River estuary system, is that restoration will necessitate a reduction in the present. That was in 2009, Plymouth and Carver, 2006, nitrogen inputs and management options to negate additional future nitrogen inputs.
Are you, let me, just if I may cut you, are you speaking on behalf of the Sewer Department?
I'm speaking, it didn't get brought up, so I'm bringing it up.
He's speaking as a citizen.
They talked about grinders, but they didn't talk about the nitrogen that's going into the Wareham River. And so, I'm just trying to bring that information forward.
Have you talked to them, maybe outside?
I sent the information to Mr. Gubertie. I sent it to the Selectmen and to Ken Buckland.
Okay.
And in there, this is from the original report. One of this recommendations was that support from the Massachusetts Department of, Department of in the enforcement of nitrogen zero stranded for standard for all new large developments in town utilizing over 10,000 GPD. GPD of wastewater. And one of the recommendations was pass new Board of Health and Planning Board regulations to require that all new subdivisions over 10 units, commercial developments generating 3,300 GPD, but less than 10,000 GPD be designated to be nitrogen zero. So my question is, what is this new development going to generate in terms of nitrogen? If all the recommendations are that if we're going to restore the river, that it has to be cut by a third, is it nitrogen zero, which is what the recommendation is from this report and from this report as well?
Well, as I understand, the Sewer Department do, they deny, they have the, they treat the nitrogen and nitrate and all that. And they came up with the report that they have enough capacity to handle.
They have the capacity, but what happens is what's coming out of that water treatment plant is toxic. It's only because it gets diluted that it's, that they are able to get eelgrass and other things growing in the outer part. So anything that's added to it, when all the recommendations are, and Ken was involved with this, he can tell you whether or not those recommendations were put into effect or not by the planning board. But essentially, any, any development over 10 units is supposed to be nitrogen zero. And the reason for it is because it's in the long-term interest of all of the residents and all of the people that come here during the summer to stop the pollution that's going on.
Right, but I believe what you're talking about, this is, that will be imposed on a private subdivision with septic. So if there's more than 10 houses, they have to do D-Nite system.
This doesn't have to do with septic system. This has to do with the wastewater treatment plant.
Right, but the Sewer Department said they could handle that. Why wouldn't they bring this up?
They didn't bring this up, but I've sent it to them and it seems to have been ignored. Yes, he's in compliance in terms of what is coming out of the plant, but it goes contrary to what is being recommended here, that everything should be nitrogen zero. And it should be, and a third of that nitrogen needs to be removed if they're going to restore the river to what it used to be.
Well, we can't speak for the Sewer Department, to be honest with you.
Well, maybe that should be part of the open hearing, then.
Yes, Phil.
Just a quick point first, just so everybody knows, and this gentleman, as you know, I live on Cape Cod, so I'm certainly completely sympathetic. We have many estuaries that need improvement, so I'm completely sympathetic to the effort and the need to try to improve the, the quality of that particular estuary. That said, all of those standards, oh, first point I meant to say, if something's been submitted to the board, we don't have a copy. So anything I say is subject to looking at what's been sent. Could you please send it to us? I assume you have it. The gentleman said it was sent to Ken?
If I can find it. I can't recall that document being sent to you.
If you do have something, you know, and I know you will, just please send it to us. But other than, you know, looking at it and learning something else, the fact is, those, it sounds like those types of goals, which again, aren't regulations or enforceable at this point, it sounds like they're directed more at individual homes or individual projects that would have its own treatment plant, such as a wastewater treatment plant that's over 10,000 gallons, which as you know, would require a private wastewater treatment plant. We are on the sewer, so we're not creating zero nitrogen or 10 or whatever it is. We're putting our, our waste into the town system and they treat it. We don't treat the waste. That's the whole point of having a sewer. So I'm not saying-
Do you understand that? Do you know what's trying to tell you? If you, these rules you're talking about, if you build in a private septic or when you go over 10,000 gallons a day, you need what they call a discharge permit. It goes to the state and you have your own sewer treatment plant. Or if you have a subdivision over 10 houses on septic, they need a D-Nite system. But in this case, it's going to the sewer plant and the sewer plant would treat it.
This is 150 units. They're talking 10 units here.
I understand.
Anything over 10 units.
Sir, but 10 on a private system?
It's not a private system. They're talking about wastewater treatment facilities.
Right.
What we have here.
In that, in that case here, it's, it's the municipality. They're not treating it. So your, your, your question, I believe, if I'm understanding things correctly, would be best presented to the sewer folks.
That's what the sewer plant does. They deny it before they put it in the river. They have, they do have-
But what they're processing, if you're adding more to it, when the intent is to reduce it by a third-
Right, you increase in the flow. I do understand.
This is not neutral because they're adding more capacity.
We do understand. They add, they definitely add in more capacity and the sewer treatment plant can handle it. And they were, they, they're okay with it.
They can process it, right, but they're putting more nitrogen into the river.
Right.
And that's coming from this facility.
Okay, and they breeze and drive cars, I mean-
All of these recommendations that came up by all of these individuals, including Selectmen, Planning Board, John Deacon, a lot of citizens at large, this is waste? Is that what you're telling me? All the recommendations are being ignored?
No, but you see, you're comparing apple to oranges. These recommendations were designed for private septic.
This is not private. This is wastewater treatment plant.
Right, but the plant, the plant can handle it. And otherwise, the Sewer Department would say, no.
They're putting more nitrogen into the river. That's my point.
Of course they are.
And the intent of all of this and all of these studies were to reduce it by a third to restore the river to what it was. So everything that you're saying here about private septic systems comes into play, too, but that's, that's other sections in here.
Okay.
So I just want the board to be, to realize that they're going contrary to what was studied in 2010 and then was recently just approved. All of this was approved by the state.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's my only comment. But I would like to know, but they're not here to answer that question, what, how much additional nitrogen is going to be produced as a result of 150 units? And I hope you would take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts.
All right. Who else want to speak? Yes, Mr. Hadley. It's getting late, so let's, if we could do it quick, please.
Richard Hadley, P.O., Box 2A2, Sagamore, Mass. I just, I just need to know, what, what role is MassDOT going to play in the, in, in the traffic situation at the intersection of Red Brook Road and Cranberry Highway?
Well, they, as I understood, they're going to make it two ways, left and right, unless the state say, no, you can't.
Okay, okay. Because I, I heard that, too, and I wasn't quite sure. I'm just, I just want to clarify that. It's going to be up to Massachusetts, MassDOT regarding that, that, that full access driveway on Red Brook Road?
Right. They're going to propose a full access driveway. If the state comes back when they go for the state permit, if they say, well, you can't, they're going to have to obey what the state said.
Okay. When, when is that going to happen, though? Is it going to happen before this project or after this project?
Before, before they start construction, they're going to have to go what you call a curb cut permit, state curb cut permit. So they go, they take this application, just when they go for the building permit, they go to state and say, okay, we want a, we want a curb cut. The state might say, no, you can't get, you're not getting in. They might shut them down. Who knows? The state might say, we won't give you a curb cut.
Okay. When, just, just about, what is it going to be, within six months or?
That usually takes the process after they apply, like two months.
Oh, okay.
The state takes about two to three months to get back to you.
Okay, so it'd be, what, the three or four months from today or?
I'm assuming if we grant the permit or deny, whatever we do decide, when they go, they start applying for the state. They needed to get a building permit. And like I said, the state might say, well, you know what, we're not letting you in. Yes, we are. That's how wide we want it.
Okay. Now, when, when are you going to, when are you going to decide? Is it going to be on the 12th, September 12th or?
We have, we are under restrictions. We have to decide by the 27th. That's what the rule says. But they are willing to give us an extension, so the Selectmen could review some of the comments. They don't have to give it to us, but they, they said they will.
Okay. When is the next time you're going to meet here?
September 12th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Slaven.
Very quickly, I think the board should have got from Ken the actual layout, which was done in 2016 for the road. Shows officially-
I got a copy of it right here.
I sent one there.
You got it? You did get it?
Yeah.
Right here.
All right, so what's-
So you have the actual final. I believe somewhere between September 1st and September 15th, the actual, it goes out to be advertised to be done.
Okay.
So what happens is, you have to remember, everybody, that again, I mentioned this before, this road project was finished in design in 2016. This project came well after that. So therefore, there is nothing in their design work, you know, for this project.
If I may, when they go apply-
I'm just letting you-
I understand, I totally understand.
So when they go for the curb cut, it's up to MassDOT whether they're going to approve it or not, because that design is kind of locked in already and will be out for bid. They may not be able to give them what they want because of the layout. It's just what it is. Everybody has to understand.
That's between them and the state, so I mean, we have no say.
Absolutely correct. We have no say.
Right. If they don't give them a curb cut, they might have an issue with their-
Right.
If they don't give them a curb cut, then you have the issue with the 6 and 28. Right now, that shows a right turn in and a right turn out only in their plans for the state. The only reason I know is, as I told everybody before, for Serpette, I'm on the, on the Vice Chair, and we do what they call the MPO. And we do all the transportation improvement programs and we sign off on this, so I know exactly what's going on with it and how it works.
Well, I'm sure, I'm, I'm very sure that the state will address it when they apply for the permit.
They'll address it when they actually get it up. All I'm saying is, right now, as far as the state's concerned, I believe, there's, I think there's a PNS or something on the property, but I don't think the property has changed hands. So I don't think these gentlemen actually own the property yet, so the state would not be dealing with them until that happens.
So just a question.
Right, but they can with the PNS. They can apply for a curb with the PNS.
They can, but all I'm saying is, anything up to now, the state probably would not contact them directly for, you know, District 5, because for the records, it shows the other people still owning the property. The only thing-
Regardless, Mr. Slaven, if I may, regardless, they can get a building, they can bring the, apply for a building permit without a curb cut. So they have to have it in hand to go get a building permit. So whatever the state gives them, so, I mean-
No, we're not talking about the same thing.
I guess not, unlike me.
Where do you get a clarification at? So MassDOT does not give them the curb cut, they're bombing.
Then they're very upset. Am I wrong?
Yeah, the real problem would be on Red Brook Road.
We'd come back for a modification.
Real difficult to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does that plan show where the limit of the state highway ends?
Sure does.
Yes, it does. I get, I get everything as I promised.
With respect to the Red Brook Road.
I assumed you had seen it because you-
I haven't seen it at all.
No. I basically got it, as I said, I'd tell everybody, I sent it to Ken, I guess. And I sent a copy, we got a copy to Jim.
Ken, can you, can you send us a copy of that, too? I don't think we have it.
Well, regardless, that's a state decision, anyway.
Absolutely. So the gentleman understands that's the question.
Yes. They, the state normally, like they did when they built 495 and relocated Route 58, there is a limit to where the state layout is. Does, does the state layout actually stop before the Red Brook Road entrance?
No, it starts after it.
That says, all that says is limit of work. That shows where the road pavement is going to change. That's all it's saying. It doesn't tell you where the layout is. And if the layout stops before their entrance, then the town has the responsibility for that.
Well, we'll know once they apply and if MassDOT tells them, it has nothing to do with them.
So, again, I'm a little confused here. So what are you trying to say? So that what they were, the state going to do, they're going to stop the layout just before their entrance? I think the entrance is in, is within the layout. That's what it's showing in that plan.
Well, it would be, it would be nice to know if the state has been approached about this project and whether or not they've even got any thoughts as to whether or not they would consider a left-hand lane. We don't even know that.
Well, is that, I'm sure they're going to have to go apply, right?
Wouldn't it be nice for your board to know whether or not they're even amenable to the idea of putting in a left-turn lane?
It'd be nice, but, yes, yes.
Again, I, actually, I'm not even sure I understand that. We, we can't find out. They're not going to give us, gee, we think so. It just doesn't work that way. And we've analyzed it responsibly with your consultants and you folks. And it's going to be done in the way that it's always done. We'll find out when the plans are, you know, submitted. Again, the answer is no. We don't know how MassDOT's going to respond. It's going to be done by professional traffic engineers working with DOM. And there's a whole process, and it's the state, and we'll find out.
I mean, we should find, I mean, you suggest and they go for a curb cut permit.
No, I'm not. I'm suggesting they have a discussion with them, which they haven't had. It would be nice to know what the thoughts of the state are.
Well, as I, I've, I've applied for a lot of permits with the state.
I'm asking them to apply for it. I'm asking for Mr. Rinaldi, who's a civil engineer, to make a date with somebody at Mass Highway at the district office in Taunton and sit down with them and show them the plan and say, hey, we've got a project that the town is considering. We'd like to talk to you about the possibility of making a third lane in there for left-hand turns.
How's that anything to do with us?
It's got a lot to do with you. It's a development project of 150 units.
If they can't get access to their property, that's on them. They have to come back in front of us.
Right, it's our, it's our, again, it's our risk.
Rinaldi, with all due respect, listen.
I have given you my professional opinion.
Right, absolutely. And thank you, but what I'm saying-
That's all I have to say on the project.
I've, I've been to the state for curb cut permits. What, I've never had the, they never gave me the opportunity to discuss it. They said, file the proper permits. I mean, I could-
That's all I'm going to say.
I've done it personally. I went before them and I asked them, and their, their answer was, file the permit. I mean, they're going to have to go through that process.
I'm not talking about a permit. I'm talking about having discussion with engineers.
What's a discussion going to give? If they tell them, well, we might get it, you might not get it. What's it going to get us?
Mr.-
Yes?
We're going to go through the proper channels as we need to, with the proper design.
No, 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 no motion. You're not getting a second.
I'll get a second.
All right. Anything you want to add?
No.
Anyone in the audience still want to say something? Yes, Counselor?
I just wanted to talk about the continuation date.
Yep.
Looking closely at my calendar, I have a hearing on the 12th.
You have to be here. I'll send somebody.
Well, I could send somebody. And most likely, I won't need to be here because much of the decision should already be-
All right. Did you get all the drafts? We have to do decisions. Can we, can we deliver Ken, that, that draft of the decision to all of us like a week prior so we could review it?
The draft decision?
Yeah, no, they have it now, again.
But there were some changes now with the sewer and stuff.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll work together, you know, all three of us.
Maybe we could get it a week prior?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
With regard to the sewer, I've already made that change and I'll send it out tomorrow.
All right. So let's get a final draft on the decision so we can all review it. Good enough, Jim? Yes, everybody?
To my two cents, I've already seen the draft. I know what changes are necessary. I'm fine with Joseph Hadden's expertise. I don't need to review anything anymore.
All right. All right. So Counsel Freeman, you, so you want to give us an extension for the 19th? To sound quick and writing, handed to, all right.
Do you, do you have a form with you? With your, no, you're not connected to a printer anyway. Do you have the last form, Ken? Just to make sure.
All right. So let's make a motion to continue to September 12th.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll be out of the state September 12th, but I'd like to participate by teleconference through my attorney. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, he could do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So we have a motion by Jim to continue. Let me write this thing down.
Do we need to, do we need to make a motion to continue the deadline?
Yeah.
First, before we even make this-
He's going to give us an extension. You don't need a motion. The paper from him.
Consent of the applicant. Okay, we've got it. We're good.
They're getting it now.
Okay.
All right. So the motion by Jim to continue. Motion to continue until September 12th. Have a second? Come on.